All right, good evening, Santa Paula. Call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. We will have an invocation by, where is she? There she is. Kay Wilson-Bolton, would you please join us? And I ask everybody to please stand.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and city manager. So join me as I offer this prayer. Pray in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Creator God, how we thank you for this community which feels safe to most people. And as we are distracted by the problems of so many others, Lord, I ask that you help us stay focused on what you would have us do. You know, we're worried about weather and wars and troubles that may come and the sorrows of so many. So help us to be so civic-minded that we look for the greater good for as many as possible so that when we're held accountable for any outcome, you will look at us and say, "Well done." So thank you for these leaders who gather to make hard decisions and bless them with the greatest amount of wisdom possible as they ponder good outcomes for everyone. Thank you for loving us and being so patient. Help us to do better and be better. I pray in Jesus's name, amen.
You can remain standing and Councilmember Crossway, can you lead us in the pledge?
Hand over your heart. Yeah, for me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, and indivisible in its entirety.
Thank you, you may be seated. I can remind folks to please turn off your cellphone or silence your cellphone. And also, if you need interpretation services. And we're gonna have Ms. Castillo let us know about closed session report.
Do you want to do? Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Crossway? Present.
There we go. Councilmember Crossway, I'm sorry.
Present.
Councilmember Ornelas.
Present.
Vice Mayor Juarez.
Here.
Mayor Chavez.
Present.
And Councilmember Cornejo is absent today.
All right, closed session report. Ms. Castillo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, council reassessed into closed session at approximately 5:30 PM to discuss items for A on the special agenda conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government Code 5495-7.6 with city representatives, city manager, finance director Christie Ramirez, and human resource administrator Lorena Alvarez. Employee organizations involved in these discussions were the Community Services Officers Association, Professional and Service Supervisory Association, and Service Employee International Union Local 721. The other item discussed was conference with the legal counsel in existing litigation pertaining to the matter of Fred and Elaine Malzacher revocable trust versus City of Santa Paula. There were no reportable actions taken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. We are moving on to item six. I'll be calling you, and if you can be ready, since we have a lot of public comments tonight. So I want to call the first three. We have Marianne Krausy, followed by Joseph Garcia, and we have Richard Abbott. So he can line up.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to speak at the time those items come up.
Okay, so we'll call you back. Next person, Joseph Garcia, representing Bright.
Good evening, Mayor Chavez, council members and community members. My name is Joseph Garcia, a first-generation college student from Oxnard, majoring in sociology at Cal State Channel Islands. I am the new youth engagement specialist with Bright, a countywide youth-serving program here in Ventura County, and I'm here tonight to introduce our new Bright Futures Initiative program and share a little bit about the work we're doing here in Santa Paula. The Bright Futures Initiative program focuses on empowering youth ages 12 to 26, particularly in Fillmore, Piru, and Santa Paula. Our mission is to support young people in developing leadership skills, engaging in their communities, and working on meaningful projects that address local issues while also promoting healthy substance-free lifestyles. Each year, our goal is to connect with at least 40 local youth through a mix of workshops, mentoring, and civic engagement activities. These include learning how local governments work, creating community improvement projects, and building skills in areas like leadership, advocacy, and teamwork. We believe that young people are not just future leaders, they are leaders now. By engaging with them early, listening to their ideas, and helping them develop the tools they need, we can strengthen our community today and for years to come. In the coming months, you may see Bright and the youth we work with here at city council meetings, sharing their perspectives and presenting their projects. We're excited to be part of this community and to collaborate with the city local schools and other organizations to make a positive difference. More information about our program can be found at B R I T E dot link slash B F I. Thank you all for your time, and we look forward to working alongside you all to support and uplift the youth of Santa Paula.
Great, thank you so much for those comments. Julie, can we make sure that you have his information? So I know Jonathan's not here today, but if there's some information, we can pass on to our residents. Thanks. All right, next up, we got Richard Abbott.
Good evening.
Welcome back, Richard.
Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. This will be quick, take about 30 seconds. Anyway, I'm not gonna talk about the road and glue trap tonight. Everything that needs to be said about that despicable instrument of prolonged animal tortures already, I've already said it, so I'm not gonna talk about it anymore. I just want to take your, call your attention to this article, excellent article in the LA Times that I found, and I'm gonna leave it with Mr. Latchaw here, and I hope you'll pick it up and read it. That's it.
Thank you, Richard.
Good night and good luck.
All right, Mr. Rudman.
Literally switching hats. Good evening, council. Good evening, Santa Paula. I'm here representing the Board of Directors for the Aviation Museum of Santa Paula. Donations in support for our annual event, the Roaring Twenties fundraiser, have been the way we've been able to keep our hangar doors open for First Sunday, our Scouts of America Explorer Group, and the preservation display of classic aircraft for which Santa Paula Airport is world famous. And don't forget, First Sunday is this Sunday, September 7th. We hope as many fans of our museum will join us on September 20th at 6:00 PM for our event. Lots of our attendees will be in their finest 1920s garb, but if you don't dress up, you'll still have fun and support a great Santa Paula landmark. We'll be featuring dancing and festivities to the tunes of the Barrel House Whalers. You'll have a great dinner, sip great beverages, meet legendary local pilots, view some of our featured classic aircraft next to the dining area, and maybe bid on our silent auctions supported by many of our local businesses and organizations. Tickets are available now on the museum website. Real easy URL to get to the website, aviationmuseumofsantapaula.org. Thank you very much and good evening.
Mr. Rudman, can you repeat the date of that event, please?
September 20th, 6:00 PM. So it's coming up in a couple of weeks.
I know Jonathan's not here, but Ms. Latchaw, would you mind making sure that event goes on our website, please?
It's, yeah, we, you know, it's gonna go on a lot of websites, hopefully.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Rudman.
But anyway, thank you very much for the time.
Ms. LeBron? Ms. LeBron?
Ms. LeBron.
And followed by Cassandra and Cheryl. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Hello, members of the city council and city staff. I want to thank you for supporting the Harvard Navigation Center. For many years, I worked for Mr. Riel Charter School in Santa Paula as a security guard. I had to go through three surgeries before I could get back to work. Even now, I have a position waiting for me. During that time, I was a big dip in my apartment and I lost my car. A nice person donated a car for me, which allowed me to travel to Arizona to help the care of my mom who was suffering from dementia. The car broke down and I had to leave it there. Spirit brought my family back on the bus and saved our beds for us. My kids are back in school and I'm waiting to go back to work. Fortunately, my credit score was good enough to buy a reliable new car, thanks to a Bunnin Chevrolet and a friend who put up a down payment. My case manager has supported me through the process to permanent supportive housing, which is in the near future. It would not be if Harvard Shelter closes. I understand Mr. Singer is working with the shelter director to figure out how to get the money we need, and I wanted to thank you. Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Mm-hmm.
I'll be reading for someone who's not present as well, so, but I'm Cassandra, so. For Ramona Gonzalez, hello, city manager, staff, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Ramona Gonzalez and I live at Harvard Navigation Center with my young daughter, Honey. I want you to know how much it means to me to have a safe place to live, which I work my way towards permanent supportive housing. My story started when I was born to a mother living on Skid Row. I was an addict baby and it took almost 18 minutes for me to recover. My grandparents adopted me and brought me to Santa Paula when I was a year old. I lost my apartment during COVID and went to live at the rescue mission, Hope Gardens. I was on the list for a Section 8 voucher, but things didn't work out. Last year, I was able to rent a room, but things happened there and I had to leave. When I was at the rescue mission, I attended school and even worked there. Now I am back at Harvard Shelter. I'm starting work, I'm starting to work on my bachelor's degree while working in Ventura. I was living in my car and I found Ms. Kay on Facebook. She made arrangements for me to come into the shelter right away. My case manager and supervisor helped me a lot. I'm feeling positive about the future, and we've heard that Mr. Singer is working on getting our funding so the shelter stays open. Thank you for listening to my story and thank you for supporting Harvard. She couldn't be with us tonight, but she's really nice. My name's Cassandra. Good evening, city council and city staff. I'm here to tell you how much we appreciate what Mr. Singer is doing to keep our shelter open. I moved to Santa Paula about six years ago with the idea that I would start a new life. I was dealing with personal trauma and substance abuse. I had a roommate, but it wasn't long before things got very difficult and I had to move. My daughter and I have been at Harvard twice. I'm working on my sobriety, and both my daughter and I are now connected with behavioral health. My caseworker and case manager are giving me tools to cope with my mental and physical challenges, and my church helps me with spiritual tools that I need. The environment at the shelter provides safety and peace despite our current lack of finances. Ms. Kay has made us aware of the funding challenge that we are here to support and need help to keep our shelter open. I'm going back to school and studying human services to gain the tools I need to find employment and ultimately permanent supportive housing. Without the shelter help, I would not have the foundation. I need to move forward. Thank you for what you are doing to keep the shelter open. Without it, many of us would be lost again.
Thank you for sharing your story, your life with us. We got Cheryl, Daisy, and Ramona?
They're ready for a question.
Oh, they did? Cheryl?
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Cheryl Douglas, and I'm a resident of Harvard Navigation Center. I moved to Santa Paula approximately two years ago to rent a room from a friend and accept a job at a local school. For health reasons, I was not able to work. I was not able to pay rent, so I was asked to leave. My only option was the local shelter. My husband joined me, but he had to stay at Harvard until we could save enough money for our own place. He was working at Spears Manufacturing. He went back to Missouri to arrange to move our belongings to Santa Paula, but while he was there, he was murdered. The emotional toll on me was great, and I had great fear of the future. My church paid my way back to Missouri for the services, but there was not support there or a place to live, so I had to return to Santa Paula. You can imagine how this changed everything. I am working closely with my case manager to find housing, but until I resolve my current health issues and have an income, I am not eligible for permanent supportive housing. I have taken this time to enroll in online classes and I'm receiving high grades. Without the support of Harvard and my case manager, I would not be in a good place today, mentally or emotionally. I thank you for caring about the people at Harvard and to Mr. Singer for helping our staff work through the financial challenges.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. Do we have Daisy?
There are two Daisies.
Oh, which last Daisy?
Vasquez.
Vasquez?
Daisy Vasquez.
Sorry. Hi, Daisy.
Hello. My name is Daisy Vasquez, and I live, I live in an apartment here in Santa Paula with my two children. I owe thanks to Housing Authority and Spirit of Santa Paula. I became homeless due to a domestic violence situation. My young son is autistic and we were living in my car. Well, I was holding a full-time job. Someone referred me to Harvard Shelter and I stayed there until I received a housing voucher. I could be approved for permanent supportive housing. I'm gonna cry. My child and I were very safe, even though some behavior challenges made navigating my stay there difficult. Thanks to a thoughtful landlord from Camarillo who owns apartments in Santa Paula, I was able to secure permanent supportive housing. I still work full-time and enjoy the life I waited for. Without a strong case manager and the support from Harvard staff, I have no idea where I would be today. Please do what you can to support Harvard Shelter. No one wants to stay there forever, but we need a hand up and a way forward. I want to thank everyone who helped me along the way, and to you, Mr. Singer, for helping us with our financial challenges. We thank all of you for helping us.
Thank you so much for coming. Ramona Gonzalez?
Somebody read her question.
Oh, that's right, sorry. Marie Aguirre? Marie Aguirre?
She's not able to come.
Maria Sanchez?
Okay, I'm not good at talking, but, Mr. Mayor and members of the sitting council and staff, I live at Harvard Navigation Center, and I'm also employed as a shelter assistant. There was a time in my life when I had a license to sell insurance, my own home, and a Chevy Tahoe fully paid for. I made many bad choices, and my substance abuse ruined my life. I lost everything and became homeless. Thanks to Harvard Shelter and my case manager, I am sober. And every day, I...
It's okay.
I'm sorry. I, and every day, as I reprieve from alcohol, Spirit was around to pick up on me and rescue me. I help manage the food pantries and supervise the shelter for my designated shifts. My life is good now, it really is, and I'm happy, especially because I'm now welcome back to my family at their home. And without Spirits and my case manager, cannot imagine why my life would be. I owe them everything right now and my life being back together, so. I want to thank Mr. Singer for helping us plan for the future, and I want to thank you all for helping us. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Second Daisy, Daisy Rodriguez? Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for letting anyone speak to you. This is for the city council and the city staff. My name is Daisy Rodriguez. I reside in Fillmore at the Mini Mansion Apartments. Thanks to the care I received at the Harvard Shelter, I am no longer homeless. I'm 70 and I've been there for two years. I lived on the trains in Fillmore until the sheriffs came and dragged me off. I lived in a tent in a city park until the rains came. When everything was washed out, I knew I was homeless. Someone told me to call Ms. Kay. I didn't want to be homeless and I didn't want to be in the shelter. Because Fillmore was supporting the shelter, I was allowed in. Ironically, you know, Kay was the one who actually evicted me from my small little apartment. I knew she evicted me. She didn't. That's why I didn't want to make that phone call. But, you know, sooner or later, ran out of money, paid the rent, and had to make the phone call. I became homeless, lived at the shelter. I was so frightened and I was desperate. I had a wonderful job at the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging. I hid my alcohol abuse as long as I could. When I could no longer pay the rent, I was evicted. At 68 years old, I was frightened and desperate. Fortunately, I was able to seek help for my alcoholism, and I did everything and I was directed to do to get that housing voucher, and I mean everything they told me to do. I cleaned the bathrooms for months. I just really did. My life's good today. I'm a productive member of Fillmore, California. I help others. I volunteer everywhere, food chair, the city, Fillmore Adult Center, anything I can do. I'm active in my church. I love my life. I'm so happy that my sobriety is here. It's so precious to me. Every day, I'm happy and I'm sober and I'm gonna keep this. Plus, one thing that I wanted, I wanted a bathroom because I wanted a toilet and I wanted a bath, and every night, I take a bath now. Thank you for letting me here.
These brave individuals came to the city council to share their appreciation and share their community concerns about what their lives have meant through the hard work of the staff at Spirit of Santa Paula. And so everybody knows, two years ago, this city council, along with the city council of Fillmore and the county of Ventura, came together on a formula to provide some emergency funding. This council has made a commitment in our budget, we just, which we passed July 1st for the July session, again, to support Spirit of Santa Paula and the residents. This investment comes from your taxpayer dollars, so it's the entire community that's making that possible. So there's no need to be thankful. I think it's because the community of Santa Paula cares about your lives and helps when people sometimes have, need a hand up. So again, it's everybody that made all that possible. So thank you for coming and speaking today. We have two more speakers on non-agenda items. So the next one's gonna be Connie Constance Leschon. Welcome back.
Thank you. I came here tonight and I had a whole three-minute speech prepared, and then I read Resolution Number 12B. And I'm, I don't need to do my speech because there's a background of why this is necessary. There's a whole protocol for an ad hoc committee, and I just want to thank Jonathan Reyes Royas, deputy city manager, for the excellent job that he did on this resolution. And I'm probably not gonna be here whenever you guys discuss this tonight at midnight, but I want to encourage, I want to encourage you to pass it because it's so necessary. It's overdue. And as the old philosopher said, well, as the saying goes, desperate times call for desperate measures. This is a desperate time, so pass it.
Thank you so much. And we have Susanna Barone.
I just want to say that I'm so honored and humbled to be here. Thank you all for sharing your stories. Good evening, council and the public. My name is Susanna Gonzalez Barone. Sorry. I'm a volunteer with 805 Immigrant Coalition. I'm here, and I just want to just say this, to ask the council to enter into a common interest agreement with ACLU in Perdomo versus Gnome and allocate funding for immigrant-serving organizations providing legal services and humanitarian aid. This is not charity. It is a gesture that recognizes, recognizes that we are an ecosystem. It is a symbiotic relationship, and I am proof of that symbiosis. I grew up with parents who were undocumented and we were a family who lived in the shadow of fear. But before then, my grandfather and my uncle, they came as braceros and they gave to this land here in the U.S. Now, you may be asking yourselves, why, Susanna, were your parents undocumented? I myself cannot answer that question. And I cry, not for myself, but for all the families that have been suffering. I come here today to thank my parents and my ancestors. I went from high school dropout to Stanford grad. I got my master's at Stanford, thanks to my parents, thanks to my ancestors, but also thanks to the city that I lived in at that time. Today, as a volunteer organizer for the 805 Immigrant Coalition, I took a family to their ICE check-in. This is some of the work that we do. I also went to go fulfill my jury duty service, and I have my certificate here to share. And tonight, I'm here at the city council, and I share this because I'm really pointing to this symbiotic relationship. We are all in this together and we need each other. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, and with the last 30 seconds that I have on the clock, I want to share that I've personally helped several families here in Santa Paula with their ICE check-ins, with taking furniture and food donations that have been coordinated through 805 Immigrant Coalition. Thank you so much for everything that you're doing and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. We are moving on to the next agenda item, which is a presentation 78, followed by, I should have, 78, California's 175th Birthday Proclamation. Is there a representative here? Or we're just gonna? Do I need to read all this? So I'm just gonna read a couple portions of this. On September 9th, 1850, California was admitted to the union as a 31 state, also known as Admission Day, and in 2025, California proudly celebrates its 175th anniversary. The city of Santa Paula joins in honoring the milestone by recognizing California's 175 years of progress, diversity contributions to our nation's history and future. Now, therefore, I, Pedro Chavez, Mayor of City of Santa Paula, on behalf of the city council, to hereby proclaim September 9th as California's 175th anniversary of statehood in the city of Santa Paula. Congratulations, California. That's all of us. Item 7B is gonna be tabled to the next meeting. Unfortunately, FFA got really tied up and wasn't able to coordinate their students and their families to be present for recognition from the fair winners that competed this year. So we are moving on to Primitiva. Item 7C, 805 Undocu Fund Immigrant Response. And I'll take the public comments right after, after the presentation, and we have your presentation, so just give us a moment to load that up for you. And welcome to Santa Paula.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for the invitation. Good evening, mayor and council members. I come from the land of stagnant water, Lampook. That's what Lampook means in Schumash, stagnant water. And about a two-hour drive with a little bit of traffic. And I'm going to try to make this brief, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to talk about 805 Undocu Fund and some of the work that we have been doing through the 805 Immigrant Coalition. My name is Primitiva Hernandez and I'm the Executive Director of 805 Undocu Fund. And we started as a project in 2018 during the Thomas Fire. For three years, we, we stayed as a project under CAWS, which I know that many members are here today, Mixteco Indígena Community Organizing Project, and Future Leaders of America with the support of the McCune Foundation and fiscally sponsored by Ventura County Community Foundation. For three years, we were a project. After the Thomas Fire, there was a Woolsey Fire and the Montecito mudslides and floods and COVID pandemic. So we had to continue responding to the needs of the undocumented immigrant and migrant community that we serve. And we became our own nonprofit on December of 2021. So we've just completed our third year of being a nonprofit. We're a very new nonprofit. And we've distributed over $8.5 million to Santa Barbara County and Ventura County residents over the last eight years. We mobilized resources, as I mentioned just now. When disasters hit, we support the undocumented and mixed-status community because when disasters occur, they are disproportionately impacted because they don't have a legal status. If their work is disrupted, like here in Santa Paula, we have agriculture community and other types of labor. If that were to be disrupted, for example, with the mountain fire, I know that there were evacuations. These families don't have access to safety nets. They can't get additional food stamps, additional cash aid, or FEMA if it was declared a national disaster. And that's where we come in. We provide that financial support. And long-term, we advocate for systems change because we recognize that providing that short-term disaster relief is just putting a Band-Aid on the bigger problem, which is this community's inability to access safety net systems, which they pay into. So that is our, our long-term goal, is that systems change so that our community can have access to the support that they need. And I explained a little bit why, why we do this type of work, which I, which I said, people without legal status are disproportionately impacted in addition to other socioeconomic factors, like overcrowded housing and really high rents and the access to the type of jobs, usually really low-paying jobs. So all of those socioeconomic factors just disproportionately impact the undocumented community. And we work out of blue skies and red skies. So red skies, picture mountain fire, right? You could see the smoke. It was like going to cross the river. Did it cross the river? No, okay, I know that was like a threat, but those are red skies. When, right now, there's no imminent disaster, we would say we're under blue skies, right? Well, we're under a four-year imminent disaster. It's red skies for us for the next three and a half years under this administration because of how the immigrant migrant community is being targeted. And we have these three funds that enable us to provide that financial assistance. Our Disaster Relief Fund, which we distributed close to a quarter of a million dollars during the mountain fire, and we supported many Santa Paula families. We also have our Small-Scale Disaster Fund, which is for house fires. So if any Santa Paula resident experiences a house fire, apartment, home, and they have some personal damage or are displaced, they could qualify, apply for funds through 805 Undocu Fund. Our Emergency Assistance Fund, this is our most recent fund. We only have been operating that for about two months, but we've already managed to raise over $400,000, of which are already assigned. We have a waitlist. On July 31st, we marked our 700th apprehension by ICE in, in the tri-county region that we serve. So those $400,000 that we've raised are already spoken for. In fact, we have a over 300 people waitlist still as of today. And we have also assisted many Santa Paula families, like Susanna was saying, through this network that we have, which I'm going to explain a little more. We've connected with many families. We are, we've worked with some of the groups on the ground here in Santa Paula as well. And there, there's a lot of opportunity for the city council to partner with us and support your community. This is a quote that is our guiding star from our inception, is disaster recovery does not begin for anyone until everyone is included. And that is true with what we are experiencing at this time as well. Programs, our community organizing program, which is a lot of the work that we're doing right now falls under that program. And our California Undocu Fund Network, we are the second undocu fund to be created statewide. The first one was in Sonoma County. They were fighting the Tobs Fire and they created their undocu fund. A couple weeks after we were created, now there's over 30 organizations that activate when disasters occur and, and support their undocumented community. And 805 Undocu Fund is the leading organization of this statewide network. And some of the goals are to influence policy, to ensure that the undocumented community is included accordingly during, in disaster planning, mitigation, preparedness. But 805 Immigrant Coalition, this is what has taken most of our focus at this time. We have a rapid response hotline, which we are operating in San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, and Ventura County. So three tri-county coalition that we have. We're operating a hotline 24/7, primarily focused and heavily reliant on volunteers, community members, many of them who are here today, that volunteer their, their time. And we've done extensive community outreach throughout the tri-county region. If any, any one community member sees a suspected ICE enforcement, they will call the hotline. We have volunteer dispatchers that take those calls. And we've trained over 1,000 community members to be responders, patrols, community outreach, mutual aid. Currently, we have about over 500 active volunteers. They go out and verify what's happening. We've responded to many calls here in Santa Paula. In fact, on Thursday, October 21st, we know of three community members that were taken from the gas station. And our volunteers on the ground have spoken to community members who now have had to change their routine. They don't go early in the morning to get gas. They don't go to get, get their coffee because now they, they heard about what happened and have to change their routine. So this is what the community has had to do because of how they're being targeted by, by federal authorities. So if we verify activity, we send out an alert. We have over 32,000 phone numbers on our database. And an alert goes out right away, alerting the community that there's suspected ICE activity or verified as ICE activity. We'll provide information about the vehicles, location as approximate as possible. That way, they are notified about what's happening in, in our community. And why is it important that we have this whole rapid response network? And that is because data shows that unlike prior administrations, specifically comparing the prior Biden administration with the current Trump administration, the blue, this is a clicker. The blue line on the bottom is Border Patrol, apprehensions at the border. The orange line is apprehensions by ICE. ICE does not conduct immigration enforcement at the border. That is Border Patrol. ICE is doing apprehensions inland, within the, the United States. And as you can see here, January of this year compared to June, the, there was a shift. Apprehensions are no longer occurring at the border as they were compared to the Biden administration. The apprehensions are happening inside, in our communities, as we are seeing here in Santa Paula. And even more alarming about those apprehensions is that 71%, 71.1% over 71% of the people currently in custody, and this is as of July 27 of this year, have no criminal records. So the people, the community members that are being taken from, from families, from our communities, are not criminals. That is what the data is showing. And this is from TRACs, which is a nonpartisan institution that obtains information directly from Homeland Security through the Freedom of Information Act, FOIA. And the remaining 29, less than 29%, that do have some kind of criminal record are the majority minor offenses, including traffic violations. So this data right here is showing what we, the community immigrant rights advocates, knew from day one, that the message from the administration that they were going to come after violent criminal offenders was not true and it was only a matter of time. And we are seeing that now, how it's mostly people that are in custody have no criminal records and those that do are minor offenses, traffic violations. That's why us operating our hotline, responding and doing everything that we can within the law to protect our community has been critical. Because, as you know, our local police department, I'm not talking about specifically here, but in other cities, our sheriff, don't even get me started with their sheriff, right? Are not going to be there to protect our community. So this is where city councils can have an active role, have some decision-making within what you are able to do, perhaps entering into that common interest agreement in the Perdomo versus Noam, because that is, but that is what, what could protect us, people of color, to not be racially profiled. Anyone that is of color, dark hair, could be stopped at any moment. You know, we've seen how in Ventura County, U.S. citizens have been apprehended just by the color of their skin. So that Perdomo versus Noam will protect everyone, communities of color. And what it will do is, when cities enter into that agreement, there is an accountability piece that we can add and add more power to that lawsuit. Because how it's going right now, it could make it all the way to the Supreme Court. And the more cities that join, the more stronger that it's going to be when it's, it's challenged, you know, in, in the Supreme Court. And what has been the community response to all of this illegal racially profiling of our community members, terror, and also just unhinged terrorizing of our communities has been the community response that you see here. I know that there's many volunteers. You have groups on the ground here in Santa Paula. I, I know that the UU Santa Paula has done a lot of work. We've done some presentations with them. They've been supporting some of the families. And countywide, we have groups like 805 Ayuda, The Mystery Shop, Labo 805 MICOB, and, and many more, Right Alliance, that operate countywide and have been serving the Santa Paula community with mutual aid, food distributions, because the community does not feel safe going to the traditional food distribution. So a lot of these groups that are doing home deliveries are doing it in the way that is safe and in a way that is responsive to what we are experiencing in the community. We've distributed over $300,000 now. We have an additional $100,000 that we're going to distribute within the next two days. But like I said, we have 700, a little over 700 families. We're not done with the year. So our, our goal is to raise a million dollars by the end of the year because that is what, what we're going to need. We are going to have 1,000, if not more, families impacted in the tri-county region. This is our information here. I encourage the city council to share. It's, it's, it's not illegal. Nothing that we're doing is unlawful. We're not interfering with federal, federal authorities. We are exercising our constitutional rights to, to show up and to document what is happening, to remind our community members who are being impacted at that time. We are the last people that may be, may be talking to them, reminding them to not sign anything, to not say anything, to call their families right away with their A numbers. It is very difficult. As I was driving here, my husband was driving, and I got a call from the hotline of a family who has the A number and she doesn't know how to add funds to their commissary account. So I'm going to have someone give them a call back and help them with that. So there's a lot of work that we can do. That is something that we are considering supporting as well, is adding funds to commissary accounts because sometimes it's not a matter of, of funding. Families just don't know how to do that. It is, it is very difficult. The items there are very expensive. So there's a multitude of ways that city councils can get involved and support their community. Promoting rights within workplaces, private versus public spaces. That is something that we get asked a lot as well. So the city council can, can do that, partner with organizations that promote know your rights within the business industry. I know that when we had the June 10 raids outside of Glass House and then July 10, we had ranchers that were calling from this area to the hotline and asking, what can I do within my ranch to make it safe? Should I put a tractor on, like, because they're open fields? And how can I make it private versus public? So all of that, the city of Santa Paula can do. It is to our benefit as a community to keep each other informed on how to best protect our labor. And this is our social media. If you want to follow and stay informed about what we are doing, our 805 Immigrant Coalition and our 805, our nonprofit, and that's our contact info. So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here for that.
Questions for council members before we go to public comment? Thank you so much, Primitiva, for coming to the city. And we do have an item on the agenda regarding the creation of an ad hoc committee to push our forward in terms of seeing what we can do as a city.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have Laura Espinoza, followed by Carolyn.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. On behalf of Santa Paula Latino Town Hall, I'm pleased to offer public comment, offer strong support for the 805 Undocu Fund request. By way of municipal justification, the proposal would maximize the message by this council that represents over 80% Latinos in this community of your support of the families who voted to allow you to sit in your current positions. Additionally, the funds requested are already being contributed, not once a year, not monthly in utility payments, but every single day in the highest sales tax in Ventura County that was overwhelmingly passed by eligible Santa Paula voters through Measure R and Measure T. In the city that was once known as the citrus capital of the world, our economy is heavily supplemented by hands of the residents right here in Santa Paula. As a reminder, many of us who advocated during the pandemic and pushed our public agencies to do more to protect the health of agricultural workers helped coin the phrase "essential workers." That description still applies and should be honored now with city funding. So I wholeheartedly hope that you will consider the proposal by the So I wholeheartedly hope that you will consider the proposal by the Undocu Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Good evening, Mayor Chavez and members of the city council. My name is Carolyn Birkey, and I'm a volunteer organizer with Eight-O-Five Immigrant Rapid Response Network and Eight-O-Five Undocu Fund. And I'm also the minister of the UU Church here in Santa Paula. On Monday, the streets of Santa Paula were filled with families lining the sidewalks for the Labor Day Parade. It was a reminder of the pride and the culture that live here. I saw the spirit of this city on full display. And that spirit deserves safety, security, and protection, not fear and instability. I urge you to dedicate city funding for immigrant legal services and humanitarian support. This is about Santa Paula families having access to due process, keeping their families together, and being able to live with stability in a place that they call home. Santa Paula is a city where nearly eighty-one percent of the residents identify as Latino. Immigrant residents and families, including undocumented residents, are at the heart of our daily life here, raising children who attend our schools, working in local businesses, sustaining Santa Paula's rich agricultural economy, and carrying forward the traditions that make this city special. Far too many are living with the daily fear of separation. We saw this most clearly after the Glass House Farms immigration raid in July. Families across Ventura County, including right here in Santa Paula, were torn apart, and some have still not been able to connect with an attorney, get access to legal support, and their risk of deportation and long-term instability remains. With one of the largest Latino populations in the county, Santa Paula has both the responsibility and the opportunity to lead. Funding legal aid and humanitarian support is about fairness. It's about safety, and it's about standing with the very people who sustain this community. The Labor Day Parade reminded us of who we are. Santa Paula is a city built on connection, hard work, and pride in our community. By dedicating resources to immigrant families, you can make sure that the heart of this city is protected with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. We are moving on.
Recommendations for increased coordination and connectivity between the cities with the goal, the outcomes that we desire are increased ridership, as well as improved marketing and communications partnerships, all to help increase ridership and growth, improving operational efficiency, and addressing the inequity in the transportation network. And with that, I'll pass it to Jeremiah.
Thanks, Claire. Good evening, everyone. So as you heard, you know, we've tried to draft a plan that's responsive to a lot of things, and most importantly, something that will provide transportation for the most number of people in Santa Paula and the other areas of the Santa Clarita River Valley, including Fillmore, Piru, and connections to Ventura. So over the course of the study, you can see here on the screen, we've conducted a lot of different analysis to help understand who, who we can help, how the current transit system is performing, and then what are the specific actions we can take to address those, those questions and reach the desired outcomes. We've developed a capital and financial plan that we're working through with VCTC and the partners right now. And there's also a longer-term project that's paralleling this in terms of understanding a path towards an integrated demand response program. So when you think about transit, you may think about the bus routes. You may also think about what we have here as the Valley Express Dial-A-Ride program. So that's most often something people can call and request a ride, and they get a scheduled trip from their home to their destination and back. It's a more direct service, but generally reserved for people with disabilities, seniors and others who have maybe more mobility challenges. And this longer-term project is, is looking at how we can provide that, that valuable service that's more expensive to offer at, with more efficiency and coordination with partners across the region. So just briefly, we're approaching the end of this project. There's been some presentations and community engagement over the, the course of the past year and a half on the project. And today, what we'd like to present is a quick overview of some of the, the main recommendations, but I want to focus primarily on what's happening or what's proposed to happen in Santa Paula. So at a county level, the theme is really finding ways to reinvest in the scheduled fixed route bus service in the communities where that should be working, but for whatever reason, and in each community, there's a different story. It hasn't been working in recent years. So there's a plan here broadly for the communities of Santa Paula, Moore Park, and Camarillo to relook at what they're offering for scheduled bus routes and come up with designs that come more often, that serve areas where more activity and more frequency are going to be more successful, and allow that to shift resources so that the demand response program, the Dial-A-Ride, is available for the people who need it first and covers the areas that would not be successful with a scheduled, a scheduled fixed route bus. Specifically in Santa Paula, we're looking at reinvesting in the scheduled bus routes, which have been operating for a number of years. In 2015, there was a, a big push to implement two scheduled bus routes. And ultimately, the configuration at the time was not successful. A lot of reductions occurred over the years to that service. And now, at this point, is really not serving very many people. But after looking very carefully at that, we feel really strongly that the route design in Santa Paula could be revised and could take advantage of recent developments. You know, in 2015, the Harvest Development, East Area One, was not online yet. And a lot of those homes have been built now. There's still more to come, as I'm sure you're all very well aware. And we see a similar story in other areas here in Fillmore as well. And so that's really an opportunity to re-anchor scheduled fixed route buses that come often and predictably and can capture a lot of the travel that we see in Santa Paula currently, being provided by the Dial-A-Ride program. So this service design should attract more riders, because it's more predictable. It's easier to follow. You know that it's going to be there. It will serve swings in demand when you have high school students who need to get to and from the school or after-school jobs and activities. And is designed to also help be adaptable when future phases like East Area Two come online, the hospital is relocated. There's plans in place to adjust these routes further, to continue to make them more frequent and a little bit more streamlined and, and take advantage of the walkable nature of the community. I'm happy to answer questions about this, but I'm going to go over it fairly quickly, because there is a lot here, and I know we've had a lot of discussion already this evening. So that's, that's really the main thing. We're going, we're proposing an A and a B route, similar to what is out there today, but reinvesting in their operations so that they run more frequently, every forty minutes throughout the day, every day of the week, and that there's sort of more of a straight line through the center of town, connecting the Harvest Development through to the west end of Santa Paula and another loop that provides more circulation around the core of town, still serving a lot of the important destinations, including the high school and the hospital. And of course, there's other adjustments that you can see here. The service between Fillmore, Piru, and Fillmore to Moore Park are being adjusted, but largely the coverage area is the same, the frequency is the same. And so connections between each of these communities are still available and strengthened by this reinvestment in the network. Here's a little bit closer look at the current proposed route. There's still some work to be done to finalize this, but a preview of where we're at. We're still working on the Harvest area, exactly where the bus would get into and be able to turn around, so that it's able to run frequently enough to come every forty minutes or so. And again, you can see in the dashed lines in the map on the left, that's areas that are served by the current bus route that would be discontinued and with the intent of taking advantage of that walkable nature, that rather than trying to hit every street in Santa Paula, we should balance that with the ability for people to walk a block to the nearest bus stop and have it come more often and more reliably. As part of this proposal, nobody ever wants to hear that things are getting more expensive, but we do have to face the idea that transit service cost to provide service across the board has gone up. This is not a problem of Santa Paula. It's everywhere in the US. The cost to offer service has gone up. And one of the most important things is that we want to pay our operators a living wage that really came to a head in the pandemic, but has been a longtime problem. And so as we've increased the cost to operate service, we really need to look at the, the funding model to ensure that transit is sustainable. And what's being proposed here are phased adjustments to the price of the transit service, so that it continues to, rider fares continue to cover some of the cost of operation, but that we make adjustments so that people are encouraged to use the fixed route. The demand response program will still be available for people who need it at an affordable price and comes with a strategy called fare capping, so that people who can't afford something like a monthly pass that allows you unlimited rides, still get the benefit of that even if they're paying as you go. So once they hit that cap, the same cap you would get if you paid for a monthly pass upfront, you can do that even if you can't afford to shell out the upfront money, which is a problem for a lot of low-income transit riders. And so to, to close this out, you know, our anticipated outcomes through this plan are increased ridership. We really believe there's evidence to show from history and from our work elsewhere in Southern California that the reinvigorated local routes will be successful. And with the attention and care that I think this community affords them and the, the interest that there is in, in doing that, that comes out of both making sure people hear about it. So I'm glad many people are here tonight to hear about it. But also that the service is reliable and there for people when they need it, and that they, they can depend on it when it comes out. Streamlined services was a, was a key focus of my presentation. And another piece here is that this is part of a county-wide plan. So it's not just improving the transit service in Santa Paula, but making sure that if you're somebody who lives in Santa Paula and needs to go somewhere else, whoops, in Ventura County, the service there will also get you where you need to go. A common issue that we hear from riders is that, yeah, there kind of is transit to get everywhere in Ventura County, but it takes a long time. And we're trying to work across the board to make that better. I think we can probably skip over a little bit of this. I've touched on, you know, just the importance of marketing and letting people know and expanding partnerships, as Claire mentioned. And there's a lot in the plan about the long-term focus to ensure that these routes are successful and that staff have the resources to make the right decisions next time when something is perhaps underperforming or that we need to adjust something in the plan. So thanks very much for your time. Happy to answer any questions. And there's a project website people can check out on the VCTC webpage.
Any questions by the council members? Yes.
Thank you for your presentation. I would encourage you that once the, the bridge across Santa Paul Street is completed, your choke point may become a freer flow from into Harvest and across. That's just a comment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we've seen, most of the public is seeing this for the first time tonight. So what is the process going forward in determining, like, what's the next step in the process? And how would the public give input? Will there be more, you know, public sessions where they can really get a, a look at the map? What does that look like?
Sure. Yeah. So now that we've been to both Fillmore and Santa Paula tonight, we'll be, we have Valley Express website, we have the VCTC website. We'll be, you know, kind of, like as Jeremiah said, just kind of finalizing some of those lost touches. But we do want certainly public feedback and comment on it. So we'll be available on those. There'll be a couple countywide, you know, meetings throughout the county. There'll be a virtual one, so we'll be certainly inviting comment that way. But also working with our marketing team to kind of get out to some of the events that people are working at, if there's, you know, neighborhood council meetings that we attend, things like that. We're certainly, you know, willing to, you know, meet people where they are. So yes, now that we've met, you know, attended here, we intend to, you know, put this out to the public to get feedback on.
And then, were this to move forward, what would be the process for determining where bus stops would go along the route?
Do you want, I can?
Yeah, so great question. At a high level, we've already identified the stops that are maintained, because regardless of the service change we're proposing, there's already a bus stop there. We have identified that on the proposed routes, there are some locations where additional work would need to be done in order for there to be a bus stop that meets at least operational ADA compliance and then potentially some longer-term investments in, you know, sidewalk improvements and, and things like that. So the initial report for the SRTP will illuminate for the community what the plan is for how we've conceived where the bus stops are and which ones are new and which ones would require some investment. And the intent is not for our report to say this is a done deal, but to give staff going forward the roadmap to, okay, if we're going to implement this, this is what we need to do before we start, and these are the things we can save for later. And staff at the individual cities or the agencies, in this case, VCTC, on behalf of Valley Express, can work out the plan to roll those out. So any concerns that the community might have in terms of, is this a good place for a bus stop? Is this safe? Is this something somebody wants in front of their business or their home? We've tried to do a high-level think-through of that in terms of the safety of serving the bus stop, in terms of the community willingness to have that bus stop there. That's something that'll have to, to follow our report.
And we would just work, you know, more detailed level with the city and with the community.
Would investments include, you know, we have a lot of bus stops. However, there's no cover. And so you have people that are in a hundred-degree weather, standing outside waiting around. Are those investments possible through this, through this action in terms of covering?
So we're separately doing a bus stop improvement plan. We're doing an assessment countywide of all different, every stop countywide for all the different operators. So there is some funding through that program to address some bus stop issues. I think we'll be doing new bus stop signs. There's a couple stops that we know are not, not, one stop in particular that's not any accessible that we're working on. So things like that, you know, we're trying to address separately through this other program. But I'm hopeful that even when that, that funding concludes, I think we'll have a good program and a, and a separate plan that helps, you know, illuminate where we need to invest in the future. And so then our goal would be, you know, to sink additional grant funding using this plan that we, we have and working with the cities to identify, you know, what can be done, you know, low-hanging fruit and all of that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, council members? Yeah, last one?
Just a comment, just that I hope that the members of the public that are here in person or who are watching at home will let your thoughts be known. Do you like the new proposed bus lines that the, that they've come up with? Do you not like them? Do you think that they would work? What are your concerns? What do you, you know, so I just hope that you'll engage in the process. Thank you.
Sure. And once we have it up on the website, maybe we can send it to Julie to help get the word out? Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. We're moving along to item seven E, Finance Department Report. Director Ramirez. See here? Director Ramirez. We have the stat, Mr. Singer, we have the stand by Zoom people, right? On Zoom?
Sorry for the delay. You can't hear as well out there. I was waiting my turn. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today, we'll be presenting the department's activity for the past eight months. It's been a while since we've been in front of you for this purpose. As usual, we, we do our jobs and keep our heads down. And if you don't hear much, that's a good sign from the Finance Department. For our accounts receivable tech, they continue to do their quarterly TOT payments and reconciliations, and they're reporting to state and local officials. That position also does business licensing. Because we're covering eight months, it was, the first part of that was the busiest time of the year. The last time I showed you this slide, it was the second busiest, when we send out renewals. But this is the first busiest time of the year. It's when we're processing all those payments, processing all those licenses, following up on anything that was miscoded. up on anything that was miscoded or forms that weren't completed. So it was a very busy time. During that phase, we had one of our employees who was previously in that position covering, but we also had temp help during that. We knew it was not feasible for us to just handle it on our own, so we did have temp help. The great news is that in the last month, we have hired a permanent employee in that position. Unfortunately, that position is also doing double duty now because they are covering for customer service reps, but we're nearly there. You'll see in a few slides how close we are to being fully staffed. Moving on to accounts payable, we process over 7,000 invoices. You'll notice that on the staff report in case you have math, math people like me that look at the numbers. That's a really big number, $39 million. Granted, it is for eight months, but the thing to note is that that amount consists of a five-and-a-half million dollar loan where money came in and went right back out for the Redtail Development. It included all of our bond issuances, which are multiple now. So only a portion of that is truly regular operational expenses, and we've broken it out even more to show construction costs, just generally approximately construction costs, professional services costs, so that the public knows where those expenses are going in a one-paragraph sentence or one paragraph, a couple sentences. We processed year ends, year-end 1099s for accounts payable, another really busy time of the year for them. Purchasing processed 150 new purchase orders and assisted with bid requirements. We also, and I believe we hired a new permanent staff person in the accounts payable position during those eight months as well. We did. So we've had three new people in the past eight months who are working out wonderfully. We have utility billing. They continue to work with residence on payment arrangements. Again, we hired a permanent employee for the position that was previously filled by an employee who was here for 29 years. We say that they're kindred spirits because the same level of customer service that Liz was able to provide, Celeste's providing now. We're really, really happy with everyone on staff. Payroll has continued to process time entry processes. We've handled multiple retroactive calculations. As you all know, we've been through labor negotiations, and that included calculating retroactive pay for every single employee. So huge kudos to payroll and Maria for that and having her double and triple checks to make sure that the employees were getting paid properly. Same thing for her. Beginning of the year was a very busy time for the year-end W-2 forms. I present this to you every time I come up here, and every time it is different. Thankfully, it is almost close to complete. Emily, who was the accounting specialist, actually in that third row, all but one are our new folks. Anai is our accounting specialist for accounts payable. Emily is the second for accounts receivable, business licenses, and Celeste is our new customer service rep. We do have one customer service rep position that applications have been submitted. We've gotten a great poll of candidates. So the last time that we had this, that we had this, we are hiring, join our team logo up worked because we got over 100 applications. Really excited to have our team finally completed. And then other activities that went on during the year was, obviously, we completed the two-year budget process, which is a huge undertaking. We completed the year-end audit process, which you'll hear about next. We began the 2425 year-end audit process. We have a nearly completed user fee study. We'll be coming back to council with the adoption of that. It's just a matter of doing all the public noticing that's required and obviously updating council with the questions that were posed during our last staff report. And then we updated the investment policy to stay in compliance with regulations. That is in a nutshell what the past eight months have been, but as you know, the day-to-day is very active for us. If there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Questions by council members? I just had one quick question. I just want to make sure that the debacle regarding the utility bill, the water bill, that's already been cleared and...
That was cleared quite a while ago.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to agenda, the next agenda item, and you have somebody on the line?
I do. It's a perfect segue in lining up these reports. What we have for you today is a presentation from our auditors. Normally what you receive is you receive two items on a meeting agenda. The first is this general presentation from our auditors on what the process is, what their role is, et cetera, and then you have the actual receive and file document. We do have to update, I do have to update the management analyst and discussion section, so I'll be bringing that back to you on September 17th. Besides the MDNA, the rest of the document, I don't believe will change at all. It's just the MDNA that we are updating, but we want to make sure that we give you a final version. But we do have Veronica here with Rams, our audit firm. Veronica Hernandez is our auditor, and so she'll take it away from here. Veronica, can you confirm that you have access to share your screen?
Yes, I do have access.
Perfect. Take it away.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Today I have a short presentation, just kind of going over some of the results of the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. And we'll start with the city's responsibilities, and that is to present the city's financial position and results of its operations, fairly in performance with generally accepted accounting principles. It is to adopt sound accounting policies, provide reasonable accounting estimates, establish and maintain internal controls, and prevent and detect fraud. Our responsibilities as the city auditor is to examine on a test basis evidence supporting those amounts and disclosures, assessing the accounting principles used, estimates made, and evaluate the overall financial statement presentation. We also review the city's internal control policies and procedures, and then ultimately express an opinion as to whether those financial statements are in conformance with generally accepted accounting principles. Our audit process consists of two phases. The first is our interim audit, will include our internal control review and a detailed assessment. We obtain an understanding of the entity's policies and procedures, review the current internal control systems in place over the various cycles, and then test controls over those cycles. Our year-end audit will conduct a sample audit of those financial records, will inspect relevant documentation, make inquiries about policies, procedures, transactions, or significant events, and then confirm balances and transactions with third parties, and then perform analytical procedures. And then with the help of city staff, we'll compile the financial statement data and the supplemental note disclosures, and then develop our opinion. So our opinion is that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. We'll issue an unmodified, otherwise known as a clean opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. And then also significant accounting policies have been consistently applied, accounting estimates appeared reasonable, and disclosures have been properly reflected in the financial Other key points to note is there was no disagreements with management. We had no material errors or irregularities discovered, no significant accounting issues noted, and then no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted. And that concludes our presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
That means you got an A+, right?
Yes.
No, 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 no applause. We are very late on this report. As you just saw, we have had significant staffing issues, but we're really excited about where we are this year. We're wrapping up our year end for 2425. We're caught up on all of our reconciliations. We're very excited for how we move forward this year. As is Rams, they have been putting in a lot more hours. We'll actually be coming back to you to amend their contract a bit because they've been putting much more than they were able to bill for, but all in the effort to get us to a very clean, clean books and put the city where it should be in terms of financial transparency.
Great. Questions from council members? Yes.
So first of all, so we're not approving the actual audit tonight, correct?
You don't ever approve the actual audit. You receive and file, but you'll be doing that the next time.
We're not receiving and filing next night. Correct. Okay. But just, I'll go ahead and ask questions so I don't have to do it next time since everybody's here. The, where do we, and I know this is a little bit of crystal ball, but what do we anticipate happening with the CalPERS discount rate?
They just, they just released, I don't know that you're aware of this, Veronica, but they just released their expectations, and I believe what they said was that they were very good notes, but I'll be completely honest with you. I saw the email come through, and I have not clicked it because I want to make sure that I dedicate the time that's appropriate for that, but I will be coming back to you with that.
So as far as we know, we shouldn't be looking at our liability increasing because they changed the rate?
Not again.
Okay.
But I'll, but I'll circle back with you.
Not since the last time they did that.
Right. But I will circle back with you. We thankfully have budgeted $7,000 for the GovInvest software, and they are the real experts in this. They actually provided us with updated information before CalPERS even did. They were able to make sure that we weren't short $300,000 last time, so we're going to be engaging them this next year.
And then we will be receiving, I assume, an internal controls letter?
Yes.
Okay. And then just a question on the mobile home rent review fund. I noticed it was negative at the end of this fiscal year, the audit that we have here. Is that fund balance still negative?
It is still.
I'm assuming.
It is still negative. There are some funds that are in the negative that the auditors and we will true up by having the general fund absorb those, and we've talked about those before, including the storm water because of AB 939 not being properly, well, not properly, but being put into a different fund. Also, the, the refuse reserve is what they called it, which was a fund created a couple years ago that had overhead allocation that we've just kind of removed. But there's a couple of funds that do get absorbed by the general fund. The mobile home, I don't believe, is one, but we'll circle back with you on that.
Yeah, if you could just let us know whether that's an item that we end up having to take action on or whether we can just get an update. Because I know at one point, we had to make that fund hold to the tune of over $100,000. So I don't know what it's at now, but I know that the general fund has had to absorb that amount before.
It's had to absorb a couple.
Yeah.
Couple of funds.
Okay, thanks.
Just to a follow-up question to that, is that because of lack of payment from the person required to make the...
It's because, one, it was before my time, but I believe it was because of an excess of expenses compared to the revenues that were coming in. That is not the case now. For example, the mobile home rent application required a deposit, so it's not that fund that's paying for it, it's the deposit that's paying for it. Work stops when the deposit is no longer sustainable, and more money is requested at that time.
And would you say that most of those expenses come from legal fees?
Now, yes. I don't have the data on what was expensed before. I can find it out very quick.
If you can find out, that'd be helpful. Thank you. All right, we don't have to motion on this. We're moving on to item 8. City Council reports, Ms. Crossway. Kick us off, please.
All right. You'd think that it would have been not busy since our last meeting, but that has not been the case. The mayor and I had our Economic Development Subcommittee, and just a couple highlights for my colleagues as we did begin discussions of some short-term rental policy-related items that will eventually come back to council. And then we also had some discussion around staff's initial work on the toolkit for business attraction. So those conversations have started. I had my CalCog meeting, the California Council of Governments, and a big topic of conversation ongoing is still sort of the uncertainty around the changes to California's Clean Air rules that we used to get an exemption to make our own rules so that we could help make the air more clean, and so there's still a lot of uncertainty. The state is working with the federal government to try to come to some sort of agreement and terms on what that's going to look like going forward. Right now, it shouldn't be a huge problem, but if they haven't figured out something by 2026, we'll start getting into a place where people are wanting to do projects that don't already have a determination, and they won't be able to get one so long as we're in lockdown. So I'll keep you posted as we hear more. We also, the mayor and I, had our Athens ad hoc conversations around the rates, and we're not quite 100% done with those conversations. I don't know if staff knows yet when we anticipate being able to bring something back to council. Dan?
Possibly at your next meeting, and if not, certainly the meeting after that.
Let's see. I had my SCAG Legislative Committee meeting. One thing that came out of that is that there's legislation at the federal government level that might tie future housing money from the federal government to opportunity zones, so that will be something that we want to watch, because I know that we haven't done a whole lot in the past with opportunity zones, but it was a bipartisan conversation that's looking at potentially tying those things together. At my executive committee meeting this afternoon, before I came here, for the Southern California Association of Governments, we talked about the fact that October 1st is Clean Air Day, so the regional council will be declaring that tomorrow. But it's, everyone is encouraged on October 1st to walk, bike, take the bus, plant a tree, whatever you would like to do to recognize October 1st as Clean Air Day. At the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance meeting, there was, they announced that they still have money for energy efficiency projects on multifamily units. So if anyone has multifamily units that could benefit from energy efficiency projects, there's still funding in the Ventura County Regional Energy Association, yes, BCREA. Too many acronyms, but they still have funding for those projects. The individual house, single-family housing ones are all, and the business ones are gone for the rest of this year. They'll pick up again in 2026, but for multifamily, there is still funding available. The Ventura County Heat Action Plan is being worked on, and I think they're supposed to be working with Santa Paula, but cities around the county to get together a list of shovel-ready projects that will, they're going to be soliciting for a notice of funds available probably in winter of 2025, and those will be for things like cooling centers, cool asphalt projects, things of that nature that then would be funded in summer of '26. And so that's definitely something that we should pay attention to. Also, the Ventura County Climate Action Plan is in its final stages. There will be releasing, they're planning to release the final plan in December, so it is available for public comment now. You can find it at sustain.venturacounty.gov if you would like to comment on the plan, or you can contact me and I can send you the link. There's also a form where you can submit your feedback. And, oh, the Clean Power Alliance at our meeting tomorrow will be recommending Fillmore to be able to join, the executive committee recommended to the board that tomorrow they will vote to extend the invitation to Fillmore to join the Clean Power Alliance. And then there were a bunch of events, but I won't bore you all with the list of events that I've attended since our last meeting.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Crossway. I'm going to jump over to Ms. Ronellas. Councilmember Ronellas.
Short as always. I attended the Labor Day Parade with everyone who was here today, and that was great to see the turnout. And that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as you know, we, the council goes dark the month of July and August, so my report will encompass the month of July. We did, we'll have the first meeting in August, and then we'll return in September, right? So some of the things that we did, the 4th of July, I hope a lot of people enjoyed the 4th of July. I drove out there to see the setup. It was wonderful to see, wonderful to see people setting up in the afternoon and enjoying the park before the actual fireworks began, and also the food trucks. There was a, as usual, chamber mixer. There was one on Park 10, at Park 1055 on July 10th. There was a grand opening of Planet Fitness, and they told us that in their history, they had the most people sign up for the grand opening, then they had, I think, I forget... they had the most people sign up for the grand opening, then they had, I think, I forget, on the West Coast or something. But it's a great new place, it's over at the shopping center, 500 West Main. Let's see, as Councilmember Crossways, there have been other meetings in between. The times that we've been dark, there have been special meetings or follow-up meetings with the council. There was a ribbon cutting at Three Sisters Asian Food, which used to be Dee's Thai Cuisine over there in the shopping center, 500 West Main. That was on July 24th. There was an award ceremony for the Theater Center and the House of Magic at Park 1055 on July 27th. Neighborhood Watch is coming around to different communities, they had a presentation by Chief Aguilar on July 30th at Harvest. And let's see, then we go into September, I'm sorry, August. Myself and Councilmember Cornejo are members of the Blue Ribbon Committee, which meets at the hospital to meet with county staff on where we are with the hospital, because as you know, there's a deadline for the hospital to, well, either get seismically retrofitted or build a new one. And they keep impressing every time we meet, and it's not regular, it's like every two or three months, that they're looking at the figures and the people and the occupancy. So they're really encouraging people to utilize our hospital and there has been a decline in the last few months. It could be for many different reasons, but that appears to be one of the driving forces for them, the county, to make a decision to allocate the money to eventually build where they say they're going to, which is at Halaq at 126. There were some hurdles as far as the ingress and egress at that location because it's on a state highway, but as you know, that hospital will serve, if and when it's built, the whole Santa Clara Valley, all the way to Puyroon beyond. So please support our hospital. I think most of us attended the Yarra graduation on August 16th. And let's see, of course, as Councilmember Ronelles said, we all attended the Labor Day Parade except for Councilmember Cornejo. The mayor and I had the Finance Committee this afternoon. A reminder that each month, on the first Thursday, and tomorrow, is the Senior Advisory Committee meeting at 130th Community Center. They are short one person, so they're taking applications. And last Friday night is cruise night and there's never a shortage of great bands. In fact, Friday will be a great band and I'll be one of them. I'll be playing, so, and that's my report, Mayor.
I'm going to move my report after a couple of agenda items, just to go closer to the end. So I'm going to jump over to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the audience. Just a couple of notes, I will skip all of the meeting appearances and activities, although I certainly enjoyed Labor Day Parade. But I wanted to just point out, we had been advertising for our second go-round of the Future Leaders Academy, but we had a threshold of needing at least 12 applicants and we had only gotten, I think, about six, six to eight total. So we are going to postpone that until the spring. We'll re-advertise and we're letting everyone that has signed up know. So I just wanted to make that announcement, we won't be doing that in the fall. Importantly, I need to announce a couple of emergency projects that occurred this summer, or one that's about to occur this next week. These are sewer-related projects that, when we have an emergency, I'm empowered to authorize staff to make accommodations and get the emergency work done, especially when it involves sewer and sewer spills. Such was the case down off of Acacia Road back in mid-July. And unfortunately, not all of the procedures were followed at that time. Our purchasing ordinance makes it clear that when I do approve of emergencies, I'm then to report out to the council at the next available meeting, which would be tonight. However, in the case of this project off of Acacia, those procedures were not followed. So luckily, the work was done, the problem was ameliorated almost immediately upon it bringing, coming to our attention. It was at a cost of about $17,000. But the Public Works Director and I have been in communication about making sure those procedures are followed in the future. Such was the case in the project that's about to occur on Mill Street, right here next to City Hall. We have another sewer-related issue. And so, starting next Monday, parts of Mill Street is going to be closed south of Ventura Street down to Harvard Boulevard, except to residential traffic. That project will probably run for about four days. Unfortunately, that one's at an expense of something more like $160,000 to $180,000. And so we'll be probably having to return to you at some point with a request for additional emergency funds. We budget for those, but this project alone will pretty much eat up all of that budget. So I just wanted to make council aware of those. Happy to answer any questions, or Mr. Goodman can also, or Mr. Wood can also do that.
Questions regarding that project? No, noted for the record, thank you so much, Mr. Singer.
Yep, that concludes my report.
All right, moving to item 10. Councilmembers, do you have an item you would like to poll, ask questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve consent calendar?
I was going to say, I would move to approve items 10B through 10G on the consent calendar, but staff had wanted to poll 10A, so that'll be in our next.
All right, motion, 10B through 10G.
I'll second.
Consent calendar, second by?
I'll second that motion, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now we're looking at item 10A. Did you have?
Yes, Mayor.
You're pulling it because?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right, we just jumped 11, we're getting closer. Is there any staff here that's particular to this item? Who's presenting on this one? It's? 11, public hearing?
Let me, if I can get the clicker for the PowerPoint. You went so fast, I didn't know you jumped straight to public hearing. Okay. So if we can go through?
Is there verification of posting notice by the city clerk?
Yes.
Is there a declaration of conflicts, if any? Declaration of exportee contacts, if any? All right, I'd like to open the public hearing, staff presentation, Ms. Castillo.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, members of the public. This is an ongoing project, we've been updating the city's municipal code with a focus on the development code. Tonight, we're going to cover, for those who haven't been tuning in on this exciting process, we're going to go over the overview, development code process, tonight's development code set number five, the amendments that are included in tonight's action, and next steps. So this project is part of the larger Santa Paula municipal code update, which has 10 titles included in it. And this update is occurring out of the city's strategic goal plans, as well as just a general desire to make sure that its code is in compliance with current state law and also with the city's current practices and also what is best practice across cities. The code here has not undergone a comprehensive update since 1997. That's not to say the code has not had some updates based on more urgent adjustments in conformity with state law that keeps evolving. So really quickly, in May 2024, there was a joint special meeting between the Planning Commission and City Council. That's when we discussed the priorities and how we would approach this project. And we have a completion goal date of June 30th, 2026. I want to qualify that here a little bit because as we go through the municipal code, especially the development code, there are many pieces of the city laws that we would like to involve the public in, involve their input in before we adopt those ordinances and update them. So we will be able to meet the June 30th, 2026 goal next year, except we might not be able to get in all the community input meetings that we would like. So on September 2024, there was then a more comprehensive joint study session and we went over a high-level review of how the development code would change and identified some areas that need to be current with state law, including our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Then following that meeting, council adopted a current ADU ordinance that is in conformity with state law. We called that development code set number one. Set number two came to council and was adopted on April 2nd. That included development impact fees, the enactment and applicability of our code, administration enforcement of our code, and definitions that are used throughout our code. On June 4th, 2025, was development code set number three. That went through a number of our zoning sections of our development code, including open space, agricultural, industrial, and airport. Then on July 2nd, council adopted code set number four. And you can see, these also continued updating our zones, including residential, commercial, institutional, airport, railroad overlay, planned development overlay, historical landmark overlay, historical property agreements, housing opportunity overlay zone, general property development agreements. Because this comes to council by recommendation of the Planning Commission, by recommendation of Planning Commission, we excluded adoption of primary dwelling unit development standards, which will be further explored by staff and staff will solicit more community input on that. And then also excluded was the inclusionary housing ordinance, which also will deserve a little more, a closer look in public input. One change that occurred of significance in set four was that the city removes a requirement that a qualified historical property have a commercial use to enter into a Mills Act agreement. And as a reminder, Mills Act agreements are a way for property owners, owners of property that is a qualified historical property can get a, could qualify for a property tax kind of credit through entering an agreement with the city. So tonight, we're going to go through set number five. It's a very straightforward amendment set of just two sections, but I wanted to provide some background. Initially, our team was reviewing not only tonight's amendments, which affect performance standards and fences, walls, and hedges, but we were also looking at off-street parking, loading, and the sign code. After internal discussion, it was recommended that we get community input for both parking and sign regulations. So those were pulled from the Planning Commission meeting and will be brought back to you at a later time. So tonight's amendments, we are making, we're recommending from the Planning Commission that we update the renumbering of the performance standards, chapter 1642. What is 1642? It's the health and safety standards for property uses. So it regulates odors, lighting, air quality, something that might affect an adjacent neighbor. And we also updated the term Planning Director to Director. That's a term that had been updated earlier when we covered definitions many months ago. And then, chapter 1644 was renumbered to 1622. So the code sections are occurring in a more sequential, intuitive manner. They skip around if you ever looked at our code. So what is the fence, walls, and hedges section? Those are the fence and wall standards and includes the more robust rules for electrified security fences. Finally, the next city meetings that will consider the development code, we have, before this body, City Council, you will be seeing set number six coming on September 17th, which is largely a renumbering of chapters 16.52 through 16.110. That is a strategy that the attorney review team is using so that we can go ahead and have all the chapters renumbered in sequence and then we'll be able to refer back to the new numbering as we proceed. So that's why you see also in the next Planning Commission meeting, development code set number seven will be renumbering the remainder of the development code. It's nice to see some sort of conclusion to development code, even though the meaty parts we'll still need to come back to. There is also a possibility that the sign code will be ready at the September 23rd Planning Commission meeting, so those interested should come out. If there are any questions, please let me know.
Questions for Ms. Castillo, yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Ms. Castillo. Sometimes we affect change in the municipal code because of outdated or antiquated ordinances. About three and a half years ago, there was an ordinance that didn't allow for signs in town to have, like, beer and alcohol in them. And there was a change in that. So again, we adapt or because some exist and never been updated or, you know, they get basically grandfathered in. And what I bring up today is under section 16.42, yeah, which is now being changed to 16.21.050, light and glare. I just want to bring up under subsection C, no, I'm sorry, oh, D, David. "No flickering or flashing lights will be permitted in any residential or commercial zone. All lights must be constant and must not change intensity or color more often than once every 30 minutes. As we reach the holiday or Christmas season, I wouldn't hate for people to be warned or cited for having Christmas lights."
Thank you for pointing that out, that nobody else caught. So that is something that we can certainly change. It'll have to be referred back to the Planning Commission because it is substantive. So before this, you know, before this proceeds to a second reading, we can go ahead and do that. We'll reintroduce this ordinance with that change, with that being asked of the Planning Commission to incorporate in the recommendation.
And I understand the intent, because you could have, you know, somebody that's, I mean, there's a dozen possibilities, but somebody that does something because they think it's cool, but it's annoying to the neighbors. And if you don't have an ordinance, how can you enforce it?
Yeah.
But again, this is a little bit of an overreach for community enjoyment, so thank you.
It's been in there for some time, so I don't think anybody's enforcing it at the holidays. People can rest assured of that.
I know, thank you, though.
Councilmember Crossway?
I would want to say, though, I think, I wouldn't want to just strike that whole section.
No.
I just would want to clarify intent because I have experienced in the last several months where there was, like, strobe lights coming out into the street from a business. And it was very distracting trying to drive down the street with lights, you know, bouncing all off of the, you know. So I think that the intent is for safety and so I think it's just making sure that, however that's modified, that it's, you know, within reason.
Thank you, it's noted.
And then one question. Are we referring to the Community and Economic Development Department with its full name in the entire municipal code? So if for some reason in the future that was changed again, that would then all be? Because I know with Director, we've changed, instead of planning, community and economic, you know, because I noticed that we had that in here and then, so I?
Yes, so that was thought of when we updated our definition section. And so it says, you know, it gives the current title and then any successor title later given.
So the assumption is, even though it will write out the entire Community and Economic Development Department, the assumption will be whatever it becomes, that's what it is.
Yeah, it'll say department, depending on the context.
Because in this particular, in our packet page 491, it still says Community and Economic Development Department in its entirety. So should it just say department there?
We could do that to shorten it, but?
I just, if that's what we did in the definitions, I, just, since it's going to have to come back, I wasn't going to?
Sure, yes.
But I'm like, since it's going to have to come back anyway, you might just look and see if in the definitions we said department, then we could go ahead and that way, if it becomes, if for some reason those two split into two. if it becomes, if it, if for some reason those two split into two bit different departments or, you know, whatever someday, it wouldn't become obsolete.
Do. And then do we have public comments?
City Clerk, any public comments on this item?
No, Mayor, I don't have any.
All right. We are going to close the public hearing. Discussion and action. Since it's going to go back, are we going to?
Just, the council would move that it go back to the Planning Commission for them to consider the amendments made here, proposed amendments made here today.
So is there a motion?
I move that Item 11A be referred back to the Planning Commission for the, not striking that section, but modification, and then also, Councilmember Crossway also brought up about the Director.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion, there's a second.
I'll second.
There's a second. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none of those, favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to Item 12A. Consideration of a Two-Year Investment in Housing Trust Fund Ventura County. Mr. Singer? Oh, Marianne Krausie. There's a public comment before this. Let's take the public comment right after your presentation.
Okay, and then I'd like to invite our staff, Caesar, to do the staff report, since Mr. Mason is not with us tonight. But you want to take the public comment first? Is that what you were saying?
Well, she might want to hear what has to be said, so let's do the presentation first.
All right. Good evening, Council. The item is to authorize a budget allocation of $100,000 per year as part of an investment in Housing Trust Fund Ventura County for fiscal years 2025, 2026, and 26 and 27, for a total of $200,000. Housing Trust Fund Ventura County is a nonprofit that's dedicated to expanding housing options for Ventura County residents. Their measure, their mission is to generate and leverage financial resources through public-private partnerships, providing below-market interest rate loans to developers for the creation of affordable housing. Priority funding is given to projects targeting, targeting low and low-income individuals and families, including farmworkers, the homeless, veterans, seniors, and youth transitioning from foster care. The City of Santa Paula has previously invested $50,000 between the year 2012 and 2015, with another investment of $250,000 between 2018 and 2022. The combined investment of $300,000 assisted Housing Trust Fund Ventura County's ability to fund $3.35 million in support of the development of 302 affordable housing units within the city. At the April 2nd, 2025 council hearing, representatives from HTFVC presented information to the council regarding their ongoing efforts to address affordable housing crisis in the county. At the August 20th, 2025 meeting, at the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund Oversight Committee, HTFVC submitted a request for multi-year contribution from the city's Housing Trust Fund. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund Oversight Committee unanimously, unanimously, sorry, provided a recommendation to council and requested $100,000 per year for the next two fiscal years. At this time, I would like to bring up Marianne Krausie, who is a board member on the Housing Trust Fund Ventura County, and afterwards, staff will take. Any comments? Discussion.
Thank you. Ms. Krausie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm one of the, actually, founding board members, one of two that are still on the board at this point. So we've seen some tremendous change over the many years. The very first loans that we did, two of them were in Santa Paula very early on, and they were like $250,000 and $275,000. Our most recent loan in Santa Paula was one and a half million. So our capacity has increased dramatically as we've been able to increase our revolving loan fund and our credibility as a small nonprofit bank. Basically, at this point, we have now loaned over $48 million. We don't have $48 million, but we've been able to loan money multiple times, because we have loans from banks and we've gotten money from the state through bond funds, which the cities have then provided some match for, along with some foundation money that we've gotten from McCune Foundation and Weingart. So combining all of these resources has allowed us to send the money out multiple times. Santa Paula has probably gotten greater leverage for its, its initial investment than many, probably any of the other cities. You've done better than 10 to 1 with, in terms of how much we've been able to loan based on your investment over time. So you've, you've made a good investment, and we continue to look for opportunities to fund in Santa Paula. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council members? Quick question. Are these funds, they're, they're restricted funds, obviously, it can only be used for housing purposes, right? Just for the public's understanding that they're not unrestricted, that they can't be used for other, other subjects? Could you clarify how those funds are obtained and what their restrictions are?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city's Housing Trust Fund is a compilation of monies that come to us in lieu of either building affordable housing or through other kind of contributions. They're set into this fund specifically for the purpose of supporting affordable housing in our community. And I don't believe that they can be loaned out really beyond our community. But with the support of Ventura County Housing Trust Fund, we're able to see the multiplier effect of making a contribution that then comes back and helps with affordable housing projects within our town.
Thank you for that explanation. And I noticed something on here that mentioned the number of units that were able to be leveraged.
Right.
Do you, I think I lost my place on here. Do you recall what that number looks like?
The number that will be produced is 302. Some of those have not yet been constructed.
Correct, but they're on their way.
Right. They're in the pipeline, so. I just wanted to clarify too, something that Mr. Singer just said. We do not silo the funds that Santa Paula puts in, or Thousand Oaks, or Ventura. They get used typically on the next project to come in, but we've never had to deny a project to a community, deny funding to a project that, where the community has funded into the trust fund, because we always are watching ahead to make sure that we have funding at the appropriate time. So we, again, we don't silo funds, but they get distributed over and over, so.
Great, thank you. And we have, Zulete, did you want to make a comment on 12A? Just on 12A, please? Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Affordable housing is one of the most urgent challenges facing our community. It impacts young, families, seniors, veterans, farmworkers, people experiencing homelessness, and youth aging out of the foster care. Addressing it requires a county effort with a strong local leadership. And 2023, Ventura County has the fewest affordable units in the entire country, according to the National Association of Realtors. This morning, actually, I researched. Here in Santa Paula, the median home price is around $727,000. The average rent is over $2,000 per month. These costs are far beyond reach for many local families. As you know, as a Ventura County Housing Coalition Coordinator, coordinator, I hear from residents often who are struggling to stay housed. Many are choosing between rent, utilities, and food. But I also hear hopeful stories from families who have moved into affordable housing and can finally afford groceries and live in safe, stable homes. To make more of these stories, of those stories possible, we respectfully ask the City Council, the City of Santa Paula, to invest $200,000 into Housing Trust Fund. This investment will support the development and preservation of affordable housing our community urgently needs. Thank you for your time and leadership.
Thank you, Zulete. All right, council members? Questions for staff? No? Is there a motion?
I would move approval of Item 12A, a two-year investment in the Housing Trust Fund of Ventura County.
There's a second?
And I will second.
There's a second one, Ms. Ornellas? All right, questions, comments, concerns?
And just to comment, if anyone from the public missed it, who's watching at home, this is funding that comes from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is funded through the in-lug fees from developments that have already been built.
All right, well, thank you so much. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Motion carries, investment into the Housing Trust Fund. Thank you, Ms. Krausie. All right, I am going to jump to my report, so it segues into Item 12B. Ms. Clerk, can you provide me with the public comments, if you have them up there for that Item 12B? Or if I might have them already here? All right, perfect. All, yeah, I'm actually going to go through this as part of my mayor's report today. And on July 25th, I convened community members, stakeholders, for what I call the Mayor's Roundtable on Immigration. This was part of listening, doing a listening tour, hearing what the community leaders, civic leaders, organizations, activists were saying was happening on the ground. Next slide, please. We collected information. We had 48 participants. Next slide, please. If we look at who was represented of those that were in the room, we conducted this, I conducted this meeting here at City Hall. We had 16 local public agency and government officials. We had 17 different community organizations, three from the business community, three advocacy organizations, six community leaders and activists, and three others. It was important to have a diverse group of voices to be part of the conversation. Next, please. When we started, we asked how people were feeling at the time. Remember, this was July, the end of July, and this is what the larger words represent the majority of the voices that were, that were, that raised concerns. They were feeling frustrated, sad, concerned, angry, heartbroken, upset. We saw everything playing out in our county. This is an unprecedented time. This has never happened in our lifetime. And so we wanted to be sure that we were listening to the voice and the concerns of the community. Next. So we asked what are the impact on people, communities, and economies? Here in Santa Paula, our strategy is to listen to community. And we have a network of community organizations and civic leaders that are already working, have been working on the ground to address these issues after January 20th. You had organizations like Latino Town Hall, Poder Popular, you had Lucha, you had the Guadalupe Church, that did Know Your Rights Forum at Isabel at the Guadalupe Church here. And so we asked people, what is the impact? What's happening? And so this document that I'm presenting to my fellow council members and for the public, next slide, please. Are those voices? These are the voices of our community, sharing what they thought on these issues, what, what they're hearing, what they're feeling. Continue, please. As you can see, they're sharing their frustrations. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Lot of feedback. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. I think that's the last one. What the whole purpose of all this was to establish some framework. We want to connect people to resources and promote linkages to care. Maximize current resources and prevent duplication. Promote multi-agency collaboration and strengthen relationships among stakeholders. Find innovative solutions that build capacity through training and technology. Combat social isolation to prevent deterioration of mental health. Build trust through community collaboration. Again, we're so fortunate that we're in a community that cares, that's empathetic, to the community, that works together. We saw the community mobilize extremely in a very short period of time to make things happen. And they're doing that today. So again, these were voices. These are people in our community who share their concerns. Keep going. We asked what is the role and good works of local community organizations? We asked the community, what are the, who are the organizations that are helping, those that are being impacted? Keep going. There's a lot of information in here. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. You can see organizations that are sitting here in this room today. Some are wearing T-shirts, some are not. But this is what the community is saying. This is where they're getting help. Keep going. Keep going. Stop right there. All those answers are organizations that are providing some sort of legal support and assistance. If you go back a little bit, Julie, we asked basically, there were four pillars in the community of what people were, were stating as of urgency. Go up a little bit, Julie. There's a question regards to when someone is impacted by what's happening right now, they're going into survival mode. And so what organizations are, in this case, first responders? So there's information about the organizations that are providing that direct service, that support when someone needs that kind of assistance. So we call those survival, meeting survival needs. Some call it basic needs, but it's what's happening urgently. Keep going, Julie? Then we have legal support. When someone's detained or someone needs to get some answers, we said, what organizations do they go to? What are you hearing? Where are you referring to? So this is the answer the community gave. Again, many of the organizations are here. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Again, basic survival services. These are the organizations providing those services. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Emergency financial assistance. These are the organizations that in the community that are providing emergency financial assistance. Keep going. Again, the community takes care of itself. And so the Mexican consulate was here. We asked him, what direct service or support does the Mexican consulate provide? And again, we got a response from the consulate that day. Keep going. Keep going. The community is hungry for information. And so what the city did, when we collected this information, is our Jonathan Rojas put information of resources on our website. We've always been able to disseminate that information to our community. When we had the town halls or the events or the Know Your Rights activities, those are important for us as a city to disseminate the information. This segues, and again, I'm providing this information because this is the voice of the community. This is the data that we've gathered, that I'm passing along in hopes that we can move to Item Number 12B, which is the creation of an ad hoc committee. And so can we move into that item real quick? At the request of Councilmember Ornellas and I at the last meeting, we asked, and the council agreed, to put this item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor just pointed out, tonight's action is the direct result of council's request at your last meeting, to return to you tonight with options, including the formation of an ad hoc committee related to immigration events and issues occurring primarily in our region, but also here in, in Santa Paula. The recommendation before you tonight is to consider the formation of an ad hoc committee. Mr. Rojas, who couldn't be here tonight because he is sick, put most of the work and effort into articulating some suggestions of what that might look like. I would point out, especially for the public's sake, that ad hoc committees are somewhat unique, because they tend to serve a temporary purpose, a focused purpose, that usually has a beginning and an end, and also is advisory to the full city council, such that they would come back with recommendations. It would be made up of two council members, it would be time limited, and it would either sunset at a date specific, or at such time as the council members have. sunset at a date specific, or at such time as the council members have completed those tasks. It is our suggestion that that committee could take a number of forms, but could especially focus on topical areas, especially regional coordination, with some of the various agencies that the mayor has just pointed out, and also with our nearby cities, so that there's consistent messaging in our community, and there's, that everyone's kind of marching in the same direction, with the same information sharing. Another aspect of the committee could be legislative advocacy, both at the state and federal level, with our legislators, and also looking at the city's own policy platform, which you've adopted, making sure it aligns with some of these advocacy efforts, but also is in alignment with expectations of our state and federal representatives. The committee could look at litigation. You've heard about the lawsuit that is being submitted, and tracking that and other litigation and opportunities. Notably, the committee could also look at how we can support our nonprofit communities, the very agencies that are out at the front lines, helping support our citizens and our residents and our immigrant communities, and those that really are in need of support, being able to give support to those nonprofits that are so instrumental in supporting them. And finally, it suggested that this committee could really be responsible for community engagement. Part of that listening tour you talked about, part of taking our message to the community, but most of all, hearing from members of the community. You know, really, the greatest value, I think, that you serve as elected officials is to listen to your constituents, and this would be a prime example of a means to do that. The nice thing with an ad hoc committee is it's not subject to the Brown Act. That doesn't mean that you wouldn't consider holding workshops or posting meetings, but it doesn't require us to have long, advanced meeting notice times, or to make all of those discussions public. And then, finally, I would just summarize by saying that the ad hoc committee wouldn't really have any direct fiscal impact on us. However, if it's going to involve staff time, which we would expect it would, the degree of meetings or research or activities would have an impact on staff. And I would just want to note that that could be significant, and it would take away from other priorities that the council has. You have before you a resolution, if the council would care to go in this direction, I know you're going to hear from the public. I would point out, we have a revised resolution in front of you. Councilwoman Crosswhite noted a, really, what amounted to kind of a small typo, and that is that the resolution you had in Section 5 noted the use of a human services committee. That's been changed. We don't have a human services committee, and so, it's been clarified in the revised resolution that this would be the use of this ad hoc committee, to make recommendations about possible funding and outreach. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that council might have. You have other options as well, but most of tonight is agendized to really discuss the establishment of an ad hoc, with the intent, then, of the ad hoc reporting back to the council with further recommendations related to this topic.
Mr. Singer, I want to commend the staff for putting together this framework, because it encompasses all these areas that are really important to the community, and there's a lot of information that has been gathered that can maybe be the foundation for some of these key initiatives. And so, please thank Jonathan for putting together such a strong framework for the continuation of discussion on this important issue.
I'd be happy to, and I will point out, just in the last month alone, there's been similar discussions at numerous cities, in front of councils, in association with attorneys and whatnot. And Mr. Rojas was able to gather information from some of our fellow cities up and down the coast. And it was helpful that we weren't having to be a pioneer in this space, because it's important that we're all looking at this from the same angle, same direction.
We are going to go into public comment. And so, Nicole Sanchez. Welcome.
My name is Nicole. I volunteer with VC Defensa. We are a local, community-based, community-oriented volunteer group. We have hundreds of volunteers throughout the county. And I want to say that I urge the city council to adopt this resolution and to insist that real material support be given to those affected by ICE raids and deportations. Families have lost so much, they've lost, you know, the maid breadwinner of their families, they've lost jobs, they've lost safety and security. I've seen the effects of this immigration policy up close. I see the way it affects communities all across the county. And we need to do more, we need to offer more for people. We do food deliveries, but we can expand that into our own city. We can ensure that schools are safe zones for families, and we can offer things like rent support. VC Defense volunteers are in the street every day, ensuring our community feels safe and secure enough to live as normalized as they can. We stand with immigrants, because we understand that we only have the rights we defend. And if we allow them to erode the rights of immigrants, what will stop them from coming after anyone who doesn't agree with them? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council members, city staff. My name is Amalia Gomez, I am a Santa Paula resident. First of all, thank you so much for adding this on the agenda. I know this has been a discussion since before July. There isn't much I can tell you that you have already heard or already experienced firsthand. We saw devastating results from the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, where a multitude of people spoke about their real concerns, yet their concerns were disregarded. Historically, this isn't new for us, seeing our people get disregarded and not protected. It's not new. Unlike them, you have a chance to support your community. There's so much divide that I've seen with people in government. But Santa Paula, it's different. You have created and built a trust with communities by simply doing events and even programs, like the Future Leaders Academy was a huge one, where we talked about transparency in the city. And it was, it was an amazing experience, talking to many of you guys here, and many of people behind the scenes that are constantly here. And also, the mayor's roundtable, the resources that you're giving out to communities, it's already here, and it's already there. You guys are already doing the work. Just putting it into an ad hoc committee would be kind of like the stamp on it. So, yeah, you're building trust with people, being transparent about the city, how the city runs, among many other things that I've seen, especially in the last few years. As you move forward, creating this ad hoc committee, which I hope you will, I urge you to keep these priorities front and center. Legal and humanitarian support for immigrant families must be part of the conversation. The resources, those are the things that we need the most. We have many conversations about immigration, and it's amazing, but we also need those resources, those resources that Mayor Chavez presented. With such a large Latino population, Santa Paula has both the moral and civic duty to act, funding legal and humanitarian support and investment in justice, in community safety, and in the people who sustain this city. Let's lead the tempo and stand with our immigrant families. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Fabi.
Good evening again. Residents in Santa Paula are increasingly afraid to carry out everyday activities due to the high presence of ICE. We are at the epicenter of unlawful detentions. This fear is widespread, even US citizens have contacted us to express how unsafe they feel. Many are missing work, medical appointments, and even chemotherapies, and essential errands due to fear of encountering ICE. As part of a volunteer-led organization here in Santa Paula, we do what we can, but we have seen an increase in calls about attorney fees assistance, food insecurity, utility assistance, and general fear in the community. We need more funds that need to be directed to provide the assistance our community needs. Residents are also expressing deep concern about the role of local law enforcement, after witnessing or hearing about masked armed men in civilian clothes detaining people and taking them away in unmarked vehicles. This erosion of trust is devastating. For years, community groups have worked to build trust in our local institutions, and it's disheartening to see the progress unravel. I too have felt the fear and anxiety that so many in our community are experiencing. It's heartbreaking to see how far we have come and how quickly fear has taken hold again. I'm worried this erosion could have lasting consequences. This is impacting our local economy and stability. The situation has created a crisis. We're going through a pandemic of racism that has been perpetrated by our own government. We are here in support of the Ad Hoc Committee on Immigration, and to work together towards a comprehensive immigration local plan. Tonight, I ask you to stand with our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sule.
Since the beginning of the year, there's been a committee meeting to figure out how to support our local immigrant community. And they've been working in concert with Poder Popular to try and support the community. Many more of us got pulled in. I wasn't involved until after the June raids at packing houses, and then the July 10th raid in Camarillo. But since that time, we've been trying to provide support for food delivery, for rent assistance, for legal assistance. And having been here, those were primarily the people that spoke to your council here at the prior meeting. And most of us didn't stay till the very end of that meeting, but we did watch the video to see, you know, whether this was going to be agendized for a future meeting. And the thing that really disappointed me the most was the finding that it wasn't urgent, because what we were seeing was that every day, people were being deported, and every day, people were hungry, and every day, children wondered where their parents were. And even 24 hours made a difference for someone who got detained from Glass House, for example. They quickly moved them out of state, so that they couldn't access legal services, so their family didn't know where they were, so that no money could be put into an account for them to even make phone calls. And people have been sent to Texas, they've been sent to New Mexico, they've been sent to Wyoming, and some of them are still in detention. Some of them are actual Santa Paula residents. The wife is a US citizen, they have US citizen children, she's got an infant, she's got a five-year-old with autism, and her husband is being detained. And he had an active asylum claim. These are real people, they are your constituents. And we just ask that you support the recommendation and move as swiftly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grausy.
Buenas noches, mayor, y miembros del Consilio. Soy Amalia Ochoa, líder comunitaria y activista con causa. Estoy aquí para urgirles que aprueben un comité de emigración y fondos para defensa legal, para ayudar a todas las familias afectadas por ICE. Nuestra comunidad no debe vivir con miedo. Por eso urge que crean un comité que investigue la necesidad de los emigrantes, y en especial para fondos para defensa legal. Recordemos todos, ellos hacen fuerte nuestra economía y comunidad en Santa Paula y todo el condado. Es necesario que la ciudad ayude con fondos como para cubrir el costo de un abogado para legal, o contratar o dar fondos a una organización de ayuda legal, al igual que ayuda económica directa. Esto de hoy no es política, es humanidad. Hagan lo correcto. Hay una necesidad de recursos, porque la mayoría de nuestra comunidad son trabajadores del campo, pescadores de limón, naranja, aguacate, chiles, y más, que crece aquí en Santa Paula. Muchos se arriesgan trabajando para proveer para sus familias y nuestra comunidad, aunque no tienen protecciones legales y constantemente son agredidos. Yo soy una campesina retirada, conozco lo duro del trabajo. Estuve 40 años trabajando en los campos, sé el sufrimiento que pasan. El 12 de agosto hablé delante de los supervisores del Condado de Ventura para pedir fondos para defensa legal. No se logró en el condado, pero le ruego que Santa Paula sí tome acción. Tengo este paquete para ustedes, con datos y análisis del programa de ayuda legal. En Los Ángeles es una evaluación de dos años. Podrían modelar algo similar para Santa Paula. Formen el comité para que se dediquen a ayudar a nuestra comunidad inmigrante. Todos somos de raíces inmigrantes, no importa que cada uno de nosotros seamos ciudadanos americanos. Como líderes que todos somos, hagamos bien nuestro trabajo para abogar por fondos y recursos para nuestra comunidad trabajadora. No permitamos que ICE pare a los trabajadores de sus hijos, ni sus hijos de sus padres. Pongan su mano en su corazón y hagan su trabajo. Correcto. Dios bendiga a todos nosotros y a mi Santa Paula querida. Gracias.
And I will translate for Amalia. Good afternoon, let's make that good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Amalia Ochoa, and I am a community leader and activist with cause. I am here today to urge you to approve the creation of an immigration committee and legal defense funding to help all families affected by ICE. Our community should not have to live in fear. That is why it is urgent to establish a committee that can look into the needs of our immigrant community, especially the need for legal defense funds. Let us remember that these community members strengthen our economy and our city of Santa Paula, as well as the entire county. It is necessary for the city to step up with funding, whether it is to cover the cost of an attorney, a paralegal, or to contract or support a legal aid organization, as well as provide direct financial assistance. What we are talking about today is not politics, it is humanity. Please do the right thing. This is a serious need. There is a serious need for resources, because most of our community members are farmworkers, people who pick lemons, orange, avocados, chilies, and much more that grows here in Santa Paula. Many risk their safety, working hard to provide for their families and our community, even though they lack legal protections and are consistently targeted. I am a retired farmworker myself, I know how hard this work is. I spent 40 years in the field, I know the suffering they go through. On August 12th, I spoke before the Ventura County Board of Supervisors to ask for legal defense funding. It didn't happen at the county level, but I am pleading with you, let Santa Paula take action. I brought you this packet with data and analysis on the legal aid program in Los Angeles. It's a two-year evaluation, and you can model something similar for Santa Paula. Please create this committee, one dedicated to supporting our immigrant community. We all come from immigrant roots, it doesn't matter that many of us are now American citizens. As leaders, it is our responsibility to do our jobs well and advocate for funding and resources for our community. Let us not allow ICE to keep separating workers from their children, or children from their parents. Put your hands over Put your hands over your heart and do the right thing. May God bless us all, and may God bless Santa Paula. Amalia Ochoa. Thank you, Amalia. Thank you, Chris. So we have the item before us. We heard public comment. Council members, is there questions you'd like to ask?
Not a question, number, just a comment. I speak for myself, but I think the sentiment of the council is that we know that injustices have occurred not only since the inauguration in January, but before that. And we hear the people, and it's time for the city of Santa Paula to do something. I know Councilmember Cornejo is not here, and because of the Brown Act, we can't discuss this other than tonight. So I don't know if she would be interested, but you have to make a decision tonight, and I think each one of us would be honored to serve on this ad hoc committee. And I have law enforcement experience, which, of course, it's been 14 years, but I respect the decision you have to make, and I know you'll make the right one. Thank you.
The one thing I don't see on here, and tell me if there's a space for us to be able to amend or incorporate this, but one of the things that I think is important, and I think the city manager had mentioned to the council, that it's important that we take this opportunity to ensure that we provide adequate training, especially to our city employees who might be put in situations that engage with ICE, for instance. And I'm not sure if we can add that as item seven and maybe review city policies to ensure adequate training and education for all of our employees. That's one thing I think could be looked at, and it's something that can be reinforced again, things that have been done, but also best practices of things that I've been working. The one thing that I think that I want to remind people is that, you know, we've had our students, our young people, walk out, and we've had our local police department support the protest by ensuring that they had safe passage throughout the city. You know, that says something about the culture we have here in Santa Paula. It could have been different. We could have had a sheriff. So our local police department is an essential part of ensuring that our community is safe because they understand and they reflect the community in which we serve here. They did that for the ICE out of Ventura County protests as well. So again, these are things that are really important to us that the community needs to be aware of, that our police department does not interact with ICE. Our police chief got a call, ICE asking him to intervene, and he said no, because it's the policy of this community not to get in the way of a situation that would put lives at risk. So I just wanted to add that the review of city policies ensure adequate training and education for all of our employees.
May I also add the language of volunteers as well?
And volunteers. With that said, I'd like to entertain a motion to create an ad hoc committee under the framework that's been proposed. Is there a second?
I will make the motion.
I made the, I entertain your second. All right. All right, questions, comments, or concerns?
And just to be clear, the motion is for this amended one that we have here plus your...
Number eight with what I mentioned, yeah. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Committee has been formed, established, and under the, just for clarification, does the appointments require approval by the council, or they're just made? Okay. What I'd like to do is invite Councilmember Crosswhite and Councilmember Ornelas to take the lead on being part of this ad hoc committee. I think that your experience with working on some issues that we've had in the past in the city, and then being a new council member, will be reflective and bringing forth recommendations to the council if you accept that appointment.
Yes, I accept.
Great. All right, we have a committee. Thank you very much. All right, we're moving to future agenda items. This is the last item on the agenda. By the way, this is how government works. Sometimes we're here till nine o'clock, sometimes we're here till one in the morning, right? But this is the work that we have to do to ensure that this city is operating and moving forward. So with that said, we are moving on to 13A. Mr. Singer?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, two things to point out, well, three things. One is your forecast for your next couple of meetings, although I inadvertently had left off the batch of, the next batch of municipal code updates that the city attorney pointed out to you tonight. And also, the planning commission supported the Kmart housing project, housing, I shouldn't call it Kmart, the housing project on Faulkner Road. That will come before you at your next meeting. So those aren't contained on here. We'll also have the opportunity for a possible study session that afternoon. And then you have before you two requests made by Councilwoman Crosswhite and also one by Mayor Chavez for council to discuss placing an item on a future agenda. And those are before you, but I'll let Ms. Crosswhite speak to her item and Mr. Mayor to speak to his.
Ms. Crosswhite.
Yeah, so something that, you know, as we've talked about wanting to accelerate our pavement management program, what this item is, is just that we could have an MOU in place so that instead of just calling a ten-page agency if we needed a little extra help, we were in the middle of a job and we had people who were out sick, or it was determined that we needed a little bit of extra staffing, that we would have a dedicated source of folks who were already trained, that we could call in to work for a day or two to supplement our, so again, not to replace any of our current people. It would just be if it was determined that we were shorthanded, we could call, we would have something in place to be able to call folks in to help be able to keep the work that we're doing locally moving.
All right, and that's just to add it to the agenda for discussion at the next meeting. Is there, do we have consensus?
Or when there's, I don't know if there's room in the next agenda, but in the next, you know, in not too long from now.
I think for agenda management purposes, it would be helpful if you don't put too much on the next agenda, but if there's not a sense of urgency, if it's the council's desire, we could bring this back. And I know Councilwoman Crosswhite has a sample from another city, so we'll use that information as well.
Yeah, the city of Agora Hills, for example, already does this, and so I've got a sample. When it comes back, we can look at theirs. One of the things, I can't remember if theirs has it, but one of the things that I would want to see is that, you know, you do, like, they would look first at folks who live in Santa Paula or the Santa Clara Valley, you know, and then it would be sort of like, and if there was no one there, they would go out. So that would be also an opportunity for work for people who live locally.
So if we can put it for the agenda in October?
I just have a legal question for Ms. Castillo, and that is, it does talk about exploring and entering into a memorandum of understanding or an MOU, but how is that going to affect the fact that we're just on the edge of completing all our MOUs and negotiations? If this is an item that may conflict with an item in an MOU about contracting out services, how would we combat that? Because we couldn't reopen for two years.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Juarez, you would have to meet and confer with affected unions to enter into this MOU. You wouldn't have to reopen the MOUs that you've already negotiated, but there is a requirement to meet and confer with those groups.
So we'll discuss it in an October meeting. There's consensus, we're good, thumbs up. All right, let's go. All right, the next item on the agenda, the future agenda items. Yes, I do. And again, this is the process we've created here in Santa Paula for council members to bring forth items or recommendations. I'm bringing forth this item to be placed on a future agenda, item to discuss the review of our mobile home rental park ordinance. As you know, it's outdated. We need to protect ourselves from future litigation, and I'm asking that we consider having the conversation at a meeting so that we could address those loopholes and find out if there's a process for what an amendment would look like and what process that would entail, including timeline, costs, et cetera.
Just, isn't this already something that we've discussed, and it's going to be part of our, remind me.
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan, yes. So I bring it forth because there's a level of urgency on this issue. The longer we wait, and we've already seen that when you have a law that's from 1992, if I'm not mistaken, we're in an environment now where there's community parks that are experiencing these potential rent increases or proposed rent increases. We know that there's, we've experienced it once. We're continuously being open to potentially getting our ordinance challenged. So I think we need to be proactive because of the level of urgency that is happening currently with our community and these requests that will come more frequently unless we start reviewing the, our existing protections that we have in place. So because of the level of urgency, that's why I'm bringing this up. It can't wait for something that will go through its normal cycle.
City Attorney, when were you planning to get to this item? Because I know that we had put it in, it's in item F1 to review mobile home rent control ordinance and provide a presentation to the council. So it was already in that document that was approved by the council a couple of months ago, I guess in the first meeting in July. So do you know when you were planning to get to that item?
So that item has already been assigned to our municipal code update team. We can certainly accelerate that and bring it back if council like to do so. I would just caution that we do have a pending application, and so we should not make, adopt any amendments until the conclusion.
You can't grandfather them, right?
No.
So we still have to conduct our business, but this goes beyond just the legal piece of the ordinance. It's about establishing the framework for what a process would look like if we're going to bring parties to the table to discuss, on both sides, to discuss what we're willing to do in regards to setting or revising or making amendments to existing ordinance. So it's not just the legal piece, because that's just getting the interpretation from our attorney, but what about the tenant piece? In this case, the tenants are actually homeowners. They're not tenants. They own their units. So we also have to bring the other side to the table. So I think we want to discuss this so we can figure out what is a process, what would the process look like to bring parties together with representation to address these things so that we're all in agreement of, that would substantiate the need for agreeing to these legal changes or amendments.
Well, if I recall, one of our last meetings, when council wanted to explore whether to add another level of appeal that would come from the rent review commission and then go to city council, the recommendation or direction I heard was to study that more, learn from Thousand Oaks, which has adopted a recent ordinance where they do allow a planning commission, their planning commission is their rent review commission, and then appeals are allowed to city council. So that was something that had been considered to invite more community input. But if council would like to begin the process through presenting a discussion of ordinance amendments, we can do that. But, you know, having community, a community workshop, I think, would be quite beneficial.
Yes, and that's part of putting the agenda item on, putting the agenda item so we can discuss what these options or alternatives might be or might look at. So it goes just beyond the ordinance, but it's also about engaging in this, both sides, the property owners and the owners of the mobile home parks, because at some point, those two parties have to agree and be part of the process to amend an ordinance. We've seen that play out in various cities regarding establishing or amending certain guidelines to make it fair and equitable across to both sides, so that both sides feel like their voices are being heard. So that's what the discussion is, is really getting into the weeds of what that looked like, aside from the amendment. The amendment's one thing, and you doing your job legally is one thing. You're going to tell us how much time that's going to take, but we also have to start thinking about what the community is saying and what they're looking for in terms of amending existing ordinance, because we know that ordinance is from the 90s. And right now, if we continue with this ordinance, we're going to get to a point where we're going to be vulnerable legally unless we start to look at how to amend and tighten up those loopholes. So because I'm saying, I'm stating the level of urgency on the issue, according to our policies and procedures, we would require a second, correct, from a council member to consider that to be on the agenda?
Hold on, hold on. We all, I think this is what I'm confused as to exactly what you're asking, because we all agreed that we're looking at this. What's confusing to me is what exactly you're asking for. If we're asking for a workshop, we've already all agreed to that. We can schedule a workshop, we can invite all affected parties to be there and give their input, but like at our next meeting, in, if you're trying to say urgency, like our next meeting, there's a ton of other issues on our meeting in September. I would not want to try to do this at the meeting in September. I would rather do it on, at a separate night so that it gets its full attention. So I guess that's where I'm confused as to exactly what you're asking.
So we can't get into the discussion in detail about, right? This is about just adding it for discussion at a future agenda.
But I don't understand why you're saying we're going to discuss what we're going to do so that we can have another workshop. We've already all agreed.
Because it goes beyond that. It goes, it's trying to bring the item to the agenda so that we have an opportunity to discuss in depth a little bit more about what it looks like in terms of process. We're trying to determine what a process looks like. Are we just going to have a workshop? Is the attorney just going to write it up? I mean, I think there's things that we need to discuss as a body to determine if that's a direction we want to go into. Maybe it isn't, right? But at least we should have the discussion openly and engage public to be part of this process so that we can figure out what that's going to look like. It could be that we establish, hey, let's go and do a workshop, or let's do this, or let's do that, but, or let's call subject matter experts regarding this issue. It can be multiple strategies, but I think we at least want to talk about it because what our community is facing that live in mobile home parks is outrageous, and it's not going to stop. And our policies are outdated, and they need to be looked at. So if you feel that this could wait, you tell that to the community.
We're not saying that. I'm just saying I don't see why we can't just direct staff to hold a workshop where we can talk about this.
It goes beyond staff.
Can I offer, if I could ask a question of the suit attorney, just for the benefit of the public, could you kind of outline what two courses of action could happen? If we follow the course that we're taking now, where we already have staff looking at it to revise ordinance, and we incorporate a workshop, okay, that's one aspect. But if we agendize this and we end up not coming to a decision that night, what is the process in each direction that would take us ultimately to a change in the ordinance? I guess for expediency.
So the first process would be to come back to council with a proposed ordinance, but that would require introduction, public notice, and there's an amount of time you must give to do that. So I don't know if we can make the next council meeting to introduce an ordinance change. The other option is to agendize a public workshop, get community input, use that input to inform a proposed ordinance, and continue to hold one or two community workshops, however council wants to hold, to get sufficient input, and then come to council with those comments in a proposed ordinance.
But those choices have to come back to a council so that we can decide what direction we want to take it, because that's not what we have at the moment.
But, Mr. Mayor, if I might point out, when the council and the...
But Mr. Mayor, if I might point out, when the council and the planning commission held the two joint study sessions, one of the things that was directed to staff was, as we go through the municipal code review and the updates, there are going to be particular topics that are going to be of heightened interest, whether that's to businesses around like your sign ordinance, or residents around, you know, height setbacks, or in this case, around something like your rent control. So I think, I think there has been an established direction to staff to expect that we will hold public workshops for those, those types of topics. This is clearly one of those. And if the interest is, is just in kind of accelerating that, hopscotching it about, above maybe some of the other things that were coming in the next few months, we could just take that direction from you tonight. Or for example, you and I could work on, you know, what are some possible, like what would the content for that look like, so that it doesn't have to necessarily require the input of all the council until something is at least formulated. So I would just point that out, whatever, whatever your direction is.
Again, we're getting too much into the weeds of the issue, and all we're saying is that let's discuss it at a future meeting. Why is it that we can't do that?
I guess I can't, don't understand why we can't do what the attorney said and direct staff to just go ahead and have a workshop.
Because it goes beyond just the legal ordinance.
So we can have that discussion. No, I know, but that's what she was saying, is we can host a workshop where the council can discuss it, the community can give input. Instead of having another meeting to talk about having a workshop, we can go straight to the workshop. You can work with the city manager on kind of the, the outline of what that workshop would look like, and we can go straight to the workshop and have that conversation with the community because it's urgent. Otherwise, we're pushing it multiple meetings out.
If we do a workshop, there is no framework for what the, who's going to lead the conversation, what the conversation's going to be. Is it going to be, you're going to present the ordinance and let the people decide what they want, what the ordinance is going to be? I think you need to really bring subject matter experts on this issue to provide a framework of recommendations potentially to look at.
And that's the reason why you have a workshop.
Is it a workshop? Do we go and do that route? I think we need to do a little bit more research and investigating on the issue. That's why I'm bringing it up, so that then we can develop the strategy on how to do the outreach and engage community. That's the piece that I think is missing.
And see.
It's not just the ordinance.
No, but that's not what I'm suggesting. I'm not suggesting she brings the ordinance to a workshop. I'm suggesting we do at a workshop what you're talking about there. We just, you do it at a workshop so that in the entire evening, we can just focus on that item, right? So that we're not having to do presentations and public comments on other things where the entire night is dedicated to this topic, and you can work with the city manager on the subject matter experts that should be there, and on, and we can bring what our ordinance currently is so we can all review it again, and the public can come and give their input, and then from there, we can sort of give some direction to the city attorney and to staff for how to move forward if we want to have another workshop. We can, we can do that tonight.
So we can do that?
Yes. Especially because it's in our strategic plan.
You don't need direction from this council?
Well, I don't think we need direction about whether this is coming back and whether it's coming back as a workshop, because I think we have that. The, the question I think you're posing is, you want to feel comfortable with, like, what does that workshop look like?
Correct. The framework.
I want, I want to feel comfortable that you're comfortable, because I don't want us to do a workshop that the council's not happy with.
I want to set the expectation and be really clear about what is, what it is we're going to be discussing versus it's going to be me working with you, going out to the community, and then bring back recommendations?
Well, if I can interject there, you, the mayor mentioned about bringing in experts of the fields in, that would be extremely difficult to do with us five up here and people coming up and giving us direction from the podium, where if we have a study session, we have experts on, subject matter experts, they can give us some direction, as well as community input.
You could.
If you guys are all right with it, we'll, I'll go that route.
Well, how about you would?
So we'll have a community meeting, and we will set up a framework and get feedback, invite panelists, bring back recommendations.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Is the process going to be that I'm going to put it at the future agenda items, or are we going to circumvent that and put it on the agenda?
No.
Tell me what the process is.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, step back. What I'm suggesting is that we're all at this community meeting. It is a council meeting, but it is a workshop. Just like we have had workshops on the municipal code, we've had workshops on Spark, you know, you'd have it at a larger venue, but it is a workshop. Now, what I, the only thing I was suggesting you work with Mr. Singer on was the, the content. Another way to do that is you could have the Housing and Homeless Subcommittee agendize this. You and I think it's Mr. Juarez, right, are on that committee?
Mm-hmm.
The two of you could work with Mr. Singer on the workshop if you want to work on it that way. But I think we want to get to being able to have the workshop as quickly as possible, and I'm just concerned about us dragging it out if we have to have another council meeting to then schedule a workshop.
Well, we can do the workshop. Let's do the workshop. Let's roll with the workshop, right?
Yeah. Okay, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying let's have the workshop. We will, we will all be there.
But then, for the record, let me make it clear, because I've done this since December 1st of 2023 through a committee, and the committee has been useless, let me tell you. And now, oh, let's follow this process. So every time, it seems like you're shifting the process. So in this case, how about, let's do the workshop. Let's just go directly to the workshop, get community feedback, let the community come up with the recommendations, we'll bring those recommendations forth. If they come forth as a recommendation, Mr. Singer, what is the process, or Ms. Castillo, tell me the process of how it's going to get agendized? Am I going to have to come back here?
No.
On future agenda items, or is it going to be on agenda as?
Mr. Mayor, as we reported to the council when we kicked off the municipal code update, this is a budgeted item. It's part and parcel to the entire review and changes to the municipal code. That's 480 pages long. This section will be one of those. So you, no, you've already given direction that it's a priority, that the money's been set aside for BBK to lead us in reviewing and amending that ordinance. So no additional direction would be.
Wonderful, yay, all right.
Now, the sense, the sense of priority is important, right?
Totally.
And so I think, I think we've heard that.
Awesome.
And I would suggest maybe rather than the Housing and Homeless Committee, maybe just having the mayor and vice mayor, only because that committee has two planning commissioners.
Oh, right.
And it, like the mayor's saying, it'll just kind of slow things down, so.
Cool. Got it? All right, public comment. Tiffany Orr.
My name is Tiffany Orr, and I am the Vice President of the Resident Association for the 400 Mobile Estates. I am a proud Cardinal and lifelong resident of Santa Paula. I'm here tonight to urge the city, which we've already discussed, to open an, a democratic process to update the Santa Paula mobile home rent stabilization ordinance. But one thing I want to bring to mind to you guys and emphasize, I am a homeowner in a mobile home park, right here in Santa Paula. My home is a trailer, but it is not an RV, and it does have wheels and axles, but it cannot be moved due to half of my mobile home in 1990 was renovated, and it was in addition, basically, I have a double-wide mobile home now. Part of it is a mobile home, part of it is on a platform. A lot of my fellow owners have manufacturer housing units set on foundations on the land that is owned by the owners of the mobile home park. Even though these places are called mobile homes, they are not mobile. And mobile home park is just a legal term that the state of California uses to describe the landowners who rent out land to homeowners like me. My home, my mobile home is paid for. I don't have a mortgage. That's because I've lived there for 33 years. But that is not the case of the other mobile homeowners in the, in our situation. Every month, they make two payments. One is for their mortgage, and then the other one is to cover, which is to cover the cost of purchasing their home. The second is their space rent that we pay to the park owners for the land that our homes sit on. The city ordinance helps protect the affordability of our housing by ensuring that we don't face unlimited extensive land rent increases, and we thank the city for having such an ordinance. I was, I literally had just moved into my mobile home park when this ordinance went on the ballot in 1992. But the truth is, it needs to be updated and strengthened, and we learned that recently, and we urge the council to place this agenda, then the matters, so that we, the homeowners, can participate in the process of updating the ordinance to protect everyone's rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. We have Victor Partida. Victor?
Buenvenido. Gracias. Buenas noches, señores del Consilio. Mi nombre es Victor Partida, y también soy propietario de una casa en un parque de casas móviles. Además, como la mayoría de nosotros aquí hoy, soy miembro de CAUSA, el grupo que trabaja con la comunidad para mejorar la calidad de vida para los residentes de Santa Paula. En la ciudad de Santa Paula hay siete parques de casas móviles, con más de mil familias que somos propietarios de nuestras casas y pagamos nuestros impuestos. Somos familias trabajadoras, jubilados, veteranos, militares, obreros de la construcción, trabajadores agrícolas, gente normal de todas las profesiones y condiciones sociales. Cientos de nosotros estamos escritos en el censo electoral y cada vez somos más. Cuando nuestros hijos cumplen 18 años, nos aseguramos de que se conviertan en votantes. Lo hacemos porque hace poco nos enteramos de lo importante que es la ordenanza municipal sobre el alquiler de casas móviles. Probablemente sepan que la empresa que compró uno de los grandes parques de la ciudad solicitó un enorme aumento del alquiler, superior al 45%, que habría hecho inacequibles nuestras propias casas. Los propietarios contrataron a un abogado y a un perito para testificar en la audiencia municipal, y conseguimos detener esta vez el aumento de los alquileres. Pero esto no ha terminado. Pero también aprendimos que la ordenanza está realmente anticuada, escrita hace más de 30 años. De hecho, no hay límite en el número de solicitudes de aumento de alquiler que un parque pueda presentar en un año. Dos días después que ganáramos la visita en junio, la corporación presentó otra solicitud al ayuntamiento. En otras ciudades, las solicitudes solo pueden presentarse una vez al año. Así que la ordenanza municipal tiene algunas ambigüedades y lagunas jurídicas que podrían aprovecharse y que incluso podrían exponer al ayuntamiento y responsabilidades. Así que queremos que el ayuntamiento estudie esta cuestión en una próxima reunión del Consejo Municipal. Dios los bendiga a todos ustedes, Dios bendiga a Santa Paula, y Dios bendiga a nuestro país. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
I will translate for Victor. Good evening, council members. My name is Victor Partida. I'm also a homeowner in a mobile home park. In addition, like most of us here today, I'm a member of CAUSA, the group that works with the community to improve the quality of life for Santa Paula residents. In the city of Santa Paula, there are seven parks with over 1,000 families who own their homes, our homes, and pay our taxes. We are working families, retirees, military veterans, construction workers, farm workers, regular people from all walks of life. Hundreds of us are registered on the electoral roll, and we are growing in number. When our children turn 18, we make sure that they become voters. We do this because we recently learned how important the municipal ordinance on mobile home rentals is. You probably know that the company that bought one of the big city parks asked for a huge rent increase, over 45%, that would have made our homes unaffordable. The owners hired a lawyer and an expert witness to testify at the city hearing, and we succeeded in stopping the rent increase this time. But this is not over. We also learned that the ordinance is quite outdated, antiquated even, written more than 30 years ago. In addition, or in addition to that fact, there is no limit on the number of rent increase requests a park can submit in a year. Two days after we won the hearing in June, that same owner submitted another application to the city council for a rent increase. In other cities, applications for rent increases can only be submitted once a year. So the city ordinance has some ambiguities and loopholes that can be exploited and could even expose the city council to liability. So we want the city council to look into this issue at an upcoming meeting, or now at a workshop, or whatever we're calling it, but we seem to really like that. So that's a great thing. Last thing that we will say, and Victor said, is God bless y'all, and we mean that. God bless Santa Paula, and God bless our country. Thank you very much, Victor Partida.
Angel Garza. Angel?
Good evening, everyone, council members. My name is Angel Garza. My family and I own a home in the mobile home park behind the DMV, 400 Mobile Estates/Rivers Edge, as it got renamed to. I am also a member of CAUSA, and I am currently running to be the official resident representative of that park. As you guys have all know, we recently were battling a rent increase that luckily we won. As others have pointed out, though, the ordinance is outdated, it is very old, and there is some loopholes. I originally came up here to ask for this to be agendized for next meeting, as it looks, if you guys are looking to move it to a workshop instead, for that. I just hope that it is very democratic, gives opportunity to the residents of all these parks to share their opinions and take part in updating the new ordinance to better benefit all of Santa Paula. Thank you very much.
Maria Cárdenas?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Maria Cárdenas, a disabled registered nurse and a homeowner and resident at Santa Paula West Mobile Home Park. We're residents with the backing of CAUSA, or CAUSA organization, are requesting that you please, as you have done, organize the, I was going to ask to put it in the agenda, but organize the mobile home rental ordinance to be updated with all of us in mind. We have several residents, such as myself, who are on fixed incomes, and we are in a park with the highest base rents in the city and in Ventura County. Instead of the continuing increase, we should have a decrease of rent and a cap of how much they are, they are able to increase the rent annually. We are also having several issues with management, and some residents are getting retaliated against, just for speaking up. We believe that just as they expect the rent timely, they should also make sure that the park is safe for everyone living in it. Like when it rains and not only water, but mud flood the streets and ruin some of the residents' homes. They refuse to build a barrier wall to prevent this from happening, and when they, and when it does happen, they take very long to clean up during the rain season. They also have recently installed individual utility panels, which I myself was not advised of or asked about going right in front of my yard and taking up a third of the, of my space for the yard, causing for the curbside appeal to greatly decrease, therefore, the value of my home should I decide to sell. We pay for the rent, so we should have rights while renting the space and say as to what happens to and with the space while renting it, like how many cars I can park in my driveway. We don't have any access to throw trash, trash in the main trash can anymore, and several other things that as paying residents, we should have access to. For example, visitor parking should be allowed to be used for as long as the visitors are there for, like for a party, since the parking space is not easily available around the, around the park. They could use like permits or, you know, stuff like that, we could recommend to the owners during the workshop that we're having, I guess, because they send tow trucks between 10 and 11, including on weekends arbitrarily, and that causes for the visitors, you know, to not want to visit for us, you know, for the residents. to not want to visit for us, you know, for the residents. They also even had my sister pay for the trimming of the palm tree. They also are responsible for trimming. And, you know, several other issues like this that residents have encountered. Again, if anyone complains, they are retaliated against, but what worries us the most is the rent increase ordinance. That is like a black cloud looming over our heads. Please help us, put us in the, well, you put us in the agenda now, so thank you for that. Thank you, everybody, for that. And thanks for your time and everything that you do for us in our great city of Santa Paula, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Next up, Daniel Melendez.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Good evening. My name is Daniel Melendez. I'm part of the Board of the Residents Association for the Mobile Home, also a member of CAUSA and also a military veteran, as was my father. My family has owned a mobile home here in the park for over 40 years, and this is where they've decided to make their home, and they like it there. One of the things that I wanted to point out to you was about having to, giving the opportunity to voice our opinion, which you, I've seen the banter go between all of you right here. So I appreciate the fact that you guys are aware of it, and to actually see you go back and forth, voice your opinion, your opinion and your passion. I understand that. Thank you very much for that. That's all we're asking for. It's just a chance for us to get our hands in on what's going on, especially when it's going to affect us. So we want to have a part and our say. We understand that they're going to have their part, they're going to have their lawyers, they're going to say things, they're going to do things. They have the power to do that, which makes our country great because it gives everybody a voice, big guy, little guy. So that's all we're asking for, is just for a chance to have our hands in on what's going on, because it affects us, and that's all we're asking for. So the opportunities arise, and I'm thankful for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, everybody, last one. Lina Partida. Close us out.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Chavez, and good evening to the council members present. I want to thank all those still in attendance. My name is Lina Partida. I have lived in Santa Paula since May of 1999, and I currently live in the 400 Mobile Estates/Rivers Edge community since 2006. I'm here to just appreciate and thank you all for agreeing to host a workshop where our opinion, our input will be at least given or provided back to the community. As someone that lives in 400 Mobile Estates, you might be familiar with our case. As others have mentioned, we recently experienced a change of ownership of the park almost a year ago, October of 2024, and with that new ownership came a rent application or a rent increase application. And originally in March, we were notified that they were seeking a 45% rent increase. And again, I want to thank you all, because as someone who serves on the Measure Our Committee, I know that those that are appointed on the rent review committee are vetted for appointment, correct? And so, you know, that's not easy. You're basically holding interviews and again, ensuring that the ordinance is followed in terms of how to hold a commission. And again, that commission thankfully heard our part, and they denied the original application. So again, there are some strengths, or there are some more, basically, the ordinance says there are certain things, and there are things that are being followed by the city, but of course, as others have mentioned, there are loopholes, there are missing details. Again, my father is Victor, and so as Victor said, the Harmony/Rivers Edge Management was able to submit a second application two days after being denied their initial rent application, and now they're seeking 47%. That might not be much, but originally they were asking $205 to now $220 per space. I also want to inform you that from information that I've learned in recent time, this second application had a deadline of August 21st. It has now received two extended deadlines. Again, that is not something that is rather explicit in the ordinance and reasons why should be changed. Then again, I am grateful to all of you for, hopefully soon, we will provide our input, especially in terms of how many times a company or a landlord is able to submit an application. And also, again, I'm trying to explain that they have now received two application extensions. Their next deadline will be Friday, this Friday, the 5th. Will they receive a third? That should be something that is explicit in the ordinance. Thank you all again. I hope to see you at this workshop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. All right, well, it's time to go to bed. I adjourn the meeting. Thank you for coming.